Order. Janine, are you ready with the roll call? And can you hear me? Any of the mics working?
We'll see.
We're just gonna... Are any of our mics working? Okay. All right. All right, let's do roll call. Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox. Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding. Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Would you please rise in order of allegiance? Plaid allegiance.
From the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting on July 12th of 2022. I want to start today with just asking for a few moments of silence as we remember our friends and our neighbors in Highland Park. Thank you. It's a good time reminder to be thankful for the positive relationships that we do have with our community public forces. So we mentioned them a few meetings ago, and I'll just recognize them again. We do have on our website See Something, Say Something, so I'm going to remind the community of that as well. So please take advantage if you see something that's not right and report it. Just a gentle reminder that this is not a public meeting. Please be respectful and kind throughout this board meeting that does occur in public. All board members are here because we want to make Barrington the best it can be for the students, the parents, and community members. Board, our next meeting is on August 16th. A reminder that we will be also holding our annual board self-evaluation on that day. So please come prepared, and if you can, review our board protocols beforehand. Lori Grant will at least be walking us through those.
Can just review what time?
You can't understand anything you're saying. We're coming across muffled.
Thank you. I was reminding the board that our next meeting is on October 16th, and we're also going to hold our annual board self-evaluation on that date as well. I believe we're going to start at 1:00 PM. Is that correct, Janine? 12:30? Okay. And Lori Grant will be facilitating for us, and she will be at least reviewing our commitments on the board protocols. So please review them if you can beforehand. Also that week, we have ribbon-cunning ceremonies, exciting time for our Bill 220. On Monday, we will have ribbon-cunning cer... Monday, August 15th, we'll have ribbon-cunning ceremonies for both Prairie and Station. On Tuesday, the 16th, for Grove and Roslin Road, and on Wednesday, the 17th, for Sunny Hill. And I'm assuming everybody has given their commitment to attend to Janine. So I just, we've got, before we jump into the public comment, we've got a lot of things on here. I just want to remind everyone, I see a lot of comments are going to be on books and on curriculum. We will be discussing curriculum this evening, but we will not be taking any action on either of those topics that I see here. So we'll be taking action on routine consent agenda items, board policy, meeting dates, and October. Okay? And that's all I really have to report, but given the amount of people that we have here, I'd like to ask that Dr. Hunt do his report first. If that's okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for being here this evening. I do want to address a couple of things related to some communications that the Board of Education has received lately and a few other important updates for the district. I want to speak to Senate Bill 818, first of all. The district actually received a press update, that's the Policy Service Update that supports the Board of Education, in November, asking the Board of Education to review a policy specific to Senate Bill 818. Policy Committee at that time made the decision to table any action on that policy until we better understood where the Illinois School Boards Association or Board of Education was going to land with alignment to Senate Bill 18. So recently, we did find out in August that the recommendation from ISBE will be to align with the standards within Senate Bill 18. Although we will talk about this later tonight, I think it's important to at least give the Board an update, letting you know from the administrative perspective, we are not recommending to the Policy Committee to move forward. We're recommending to opt not adopt the policy implementing Senate Bill 18. So specific to that recommendation, and again, the Policy Committee will review this at our next meeting, and will bring this back to the Board for any further conversation. But specific kind of reasons for that, there's a significant amount of content and grade levels that we frankly cannot absorb, based on the number of standards that we teach and the level of appropriateness of age in that content. And we think that would be pulling away from the core curriculum. Secondly, ISBE has not provided direction on if the district has to adopt all or nothing within that policy. So that's important for us to know as well. And then also, I think it's important for the Board to remember, we will have to continue to provide the mandated units of study that are within the health and PE curriculum that we have been offering over time. So we'll continue to do that. That includes human growth and development, family life, including sexual abstinence until marriage, and age-appropriate sexual abuse and assault awareness prevention and education in grades PK through 12. So to be clear, those are mandated in law, and we will have to continue to include those. I want to clarify again, Policy Committee will have this conversation in our next meeting, and any action or any further information regarding that would come through Policy Committee to the Board of Education. I also wanted to address book challenge. I know that's, you know, we've had a lot of interest in that. I addressed this in our last meeting as well. We do have a procedure for the reevaluation of materials that we are undergoing currently with the book Gender Queer. The school review has been completed, and that has been shared with the Board of Education, and we are moving forward with the district-level review at this time. That process is ongoing. I would anticipate this book review to be completed and shared with the Board of Education by the September Board of Education meeting. So those are two updates I wanted to share, as well as some other items district-wide. Some really good news for the school district. It was definitely in spring of this year where an email came across my desk from ISBE asking districts to apply for a competitive freedom grant. And I think there might be some that thought we were crazy with the timeline and how quickly we had to turn around to file that grant. But I'm pleased to announce we were successful, and we will receive $350,000 per year for the next three years totaling over $1 million to support students. The grant specifically is written to enhance opportunities for students at Sunny Hill, enrichment opportunities outside of the school day and after-school programming. I want to thank Becky Weagle, Nate Rouse, and the Boys and Girls Club of Dundee Township, who signed on as our partners with this grant. So that's a great thing for our school district that will help improve opportunities for our students in the Sunny Hill community. Also want to recognize and thank those involved that helped us receive the Harper Community Innovation Fund grant. That's a one-year grant for $10,000, and this again allows Sunny Hill students to participate in the In-Zone Program at Harper College, the summer camp where students can elect to specialty courses to enrich their lives and explore interests. We want to thank Barrington Area Development Council, Penny Casimir and Brian Battle, along with our local grant writers of Becky Weagle, again, for putting the time and the energy in to go above and beyond and bring those funds here to help our kids. So thank you all very much for the effort. In terms of enrollment, you do have the grid in front of you. We continue to move through staffing. You know, we're getting closer and closer to, you know, opening a school. As you kind of review that, you know, the Board of Education did ask that we really try to stick within class-sized guidelines this year, and that has been our charge moving forward. I'd highlight two kind of areas that we continue to watch. Third grade at Roslin Road, we've got a couple of sections that are increasing towards or over those guidelines with a couple of students. And we're also keeping an eye on a fifth-grade sections at Rose Elementary. We, again, we're very cognizant of staffing and the financial commitment to running as efficiently as possible while providing the appropriate education to students. And we'll continue to update you if there's any changes to staffing levels as we move into the school year. Also in front of you this evening, you have an updated copy of District Mission Statement, including Core Belief and Strategic Priorities. It will also include learner profile for you. Should encompass the changes discussed by the Board of Education at our last meeting. And we have administratively already started to talk about aligning district goals and the work within the district to the priorities established within the Framework 220 process. We do have action planning, a lot of work to do to really complete that plan, and that'll happen as we come back into the school year. But we are already starting to align the work and the priorities within that plan, and kind of more of that information will be coming as we move closer to the start of school. Lastly, Ms. Bradford talked about the exciting groundbreaking opportunities for referendum, and I unfortunately don't have equally good news to share, but I think it's important to share with the Board of Education and as well as our public. Dr. Vine over there did kind of late-breaking news a few meetings ago regarding gravel strike that's impacting construction throughout the area. That strike has moved into Week Five at this point, and at this point, it is starting to impact the progress that we've made or able to make with some of our construction projects. So if you look at Barrington High School specifically, we were about one week ahead with that project. We're anticipating being about three weeks behind as of right now. A project that should have concluded in September, now looking at possibly October. The other options that we did review had significant cost. In other words, going elsewhere or further out to get gravel had significant cost to the district and really didn't make sense. I want to commend Dr. Vine, Dr. Winkleman, and the construction team, as it looks like they're trying to be really creative with the Prairie parking lot. As you know, that was a big project that we were slated worried that the gravel would impact that. They're being creative with trying to obtain gravel from some of our other temporary lots and do some things to make sure that project continues to move forward. So I can't say I promise that that will be delivered, but we are working to continue to move that forward, so hopefully we can be there by the opening of school. So that would conclude my report and information tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just want to thank you for your recommendation. I'm regarding Senate Bill 818, and you know, you are our CEO. We, as a board, delegate the authority to you to run the district and to provide your leadership. And as a member of the Policy Committee, I definitely appreciate and accept your recommendation and will proceed accordingly.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Hunt, thank you so much for giving this primer. I think it helps, you know, quell some of the concerns that we've heard about throughout the week. If I could ask, would you mind elaborating a little bit more, though, on the process of how books are reviewed in our district as far as you mentioned the school-level review?
Thank you for bringing that up. I know you had asked about that.
Yes, please.
And we did put...
We have the information, yes.
Yeah. You have that information, and we did put all of the guidelines for selection criteria on the website. It's under the parent tab, library section, so parents can go through that and look at all of that information.
But would you mind just kind of giving a quick summary, so that folks understand that it's a school-level review, then the district?
Are you talking about the...
The review process?
The review process?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it starts with the library review. It moves to this building level, which is now complete with our current review. It then moves to a district-level team, which involves, you know, a variety of members that were identified, including a parent. Then kind of the summary of that will be provided to the Board of Education, who will then make a decision whether they take that up and have a conversation.
Correct. So at the end of this process, we, as a board, have an opportunity to discuss as well?
Sure.
Perfect.
Do all reviews go through all three levels?
No.
So how do you determine? I mean, I understand this, there are a lot of emails.
You look at the policy. As it moves through the review, parents or those who challenge a book have the opportunity to continue to move it forward.
I see. Okay.
When it comes to the board, is that a discussion or an action item?
It would be a discussion, I think, originally, and then we'll, you know, hear where we want to go with it, and then it could be an action item.
Okay.
So the board is able to dispute a recommended... It's a recommendation, I'm assuming. It's not a final answer.
It would be the final recommendation from the administration.
Final recommendation.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm hearing the desire for it to be an action item.
I feel given, and this is on me, I did not understand this process fully, which I apologize for. We try to figure out a lot in our first year here. But yeah, I think if a book, if something is pushed to this level, I would appreciate it being, once it's gone through review process, discussed at the board level.
Great. So what we'll have to clarify as we kind of go through this is, is that typically I would share that information, the board would let me know if they want to discuss it. Is that the process, or you want, am I hearing this board wants everyone to come to this level?
I think if it go, what I heard was if it gets to the district level, right? If it gets, if it gets that far in the review process?
We should be discussing it.
We should discuss it.
Okay.
And we can talk about that during our self-evaluation, too. Might be a point that we want to review.
Did the previously reviewed book get to the district level?
It did, and was shared with you, with the board in a weekly report. I think that's, that, in my experience, that would be the time where the board said, hey, we want to have a conversation at the board level.
And that is where I apologize for not quite understanding the system. So, I mean, perhaps, I know you said that process is over. I do have questions. I already, and maybe we want to discuss this after we hear from the public. I mean, I already questioned who is listed on the reviews. I just, I... Yeah. I think that this needs to be, especially if it gets to the district level, it should just automatically be transparent at the board level, discussion, public discussion.
And I'm with you, Katie. I misread it myself, and so I guess, I know you gave a pretty resounding no last week or last meeting. I guess my question would be, because... Sorry. Because...
Just pull it a little closer, Steve.
Okay. I'm sorry. Is this better?
We'll get all up in here for y'all. Is this working?
Yeah. Is this better? I'm sorry.
Back off a little bit.
All right.
Just talk louder, too.
Sure. Well, I guess for our purposes, my understanding from our prior meeting was that because we had missed as a board, and again, my fault for not understanding this, but in February, when that review of that last book was done, because we did not request a board discussion at this stage in July, five months pence, we're now not able to ask for a board-level review, correct?
Yeah. I would say that the policy and the procedures that are established limit that for one year. And I would tell you after digging into this and having some conversation with legal.
Yes.
I think we do want to look at this, but I don't want, I don't want to do it in the midst of...
Of course.
While we're going through this, right? I don't want people thinking we're looking to change something because of where we're at today. So I do believe we need to have a conversation as a board and get some legal input into the, you know, as Katie mentioned, the process and how that lays itself out. I just would suggest we get through kind of where we're at right now.
So to clarify, you confirm with legal that because, you know, as new board members, we, or I, let's say?
I did not ask that specific question.
Okay. So I guess my question then is, or my request, if it's okay to do this, so Sandra, would be, could we add this as a discussion item, provided that our legal counsel agrees for a future meeting?
If the review gets to the district level?
I'm talking about the prior review that we missed.
Oh, the prior review?
Correct. So the one done in February that we did not bring up as a discussion item. Because I think you'd be ashamed to wait another seven months when there are, you know, concerns.
Well, and I think along with that, the greater issue here is I think we probably need to have a discussion item on how we curate books for our library and how they're chosen, and what parameters we have around what we consider sexually explicit material, what our limitations are as a district. So perhaps this is a bigger discussion that needs... I would like a better, I mean, I think we have a little bit of a gray area here as to what, I know, Angela, you brought up policies that we already have in place, and they seem to directly conflict with the Library Bill of Rights also. So I think we have a greater discussion here that needs to happen over what is appropriate to have in our libraries.
Yeah, I think so, too. And, you know, I, obviously, you know, definitions are always key, right? And then, you know, what are our standards? What does the First Amendment, you know, it protects your freedom of speech, but it doesn't protect your freedom to defame somebody. It doesn't protect pornography, and it doesn't protect obscenity. So, you know, I think that when you look at, you know, what we are, what types of materials we're curating, the definitions are key. And if you look at the history of the district and, you know, books that we had found did not fall within our First Amendment rights. I mean, Judy Blume books were removed. You know, it was quite some time ago, but they were removed because they provided content that was deemed to be either obscene or, you know, beyond what is viewed as educational material that's relevant for children. I mean, it's kind of, it's always a balancing act, right? Like, there's educational value versus the, you know, potential for, you know, being seen as obscene or pornographic. And that's what it looks like this latest review did as well. They balanced it. So I think that it's timely, it's relevant for us to discuss those definitions and to discuss what that balance is in our district, because I think that that's a question, you know? And, you know, maybe that has changed since, I don't know, 15 years ago when certain books were removed, but I...
Yeah, and you have professional educators that are experts in this, that need to be a part of that process.
So who's, is this on to Melissa's? I mean, which of your administrators kind of oversees the library?
So Ty Gorman is the, he oversees library media, Ty Gorman in Dr. Fuller's office.
Okay.
I think I'd want to spend some time looking policy-wise, we have anything there that would have to come through policy. So it's a bigger, broader conversation for sure.
Okay. So maybe you can get back to us and let us, do you have another comment on that, Leah?
Yes, please. So I do think it's valid that these policies are in place, that our educators and our librarians are making these decisions. As a board, it's our job to maybe understand it better, but I don't think it's the board's view that counts, like, if I like a book or don't like a book. I think we have, we have experts to look at books and evaluate them and see what's proper for our students and for our diverse students. To suit all of our students and have things that are helpful for all of our students and represent the underrepresented and the students that need extra support in these, in these books and in our libraries.
But I would totally agree with you, and I... But I think that we can have a very diverse and inclusive library that doesn't have sexually explicit content. And I would actually, along that line, I also agree with you, Leah, but I, and this is a greater conversation. I have personally, and maybe this is me, I, and I'm not meaning this to be offensive, I have a problem that's, some of the people, some of the people involved in the book review process are also the people in charge of putting the books in the library.
So we don't have this conversation now, it is not on the agenda. Can we agree that we would move it to a future agenda item when Dr. Hunt sees that it's feasible?
Yeah.
That sounds good.
I mean, there's a couple of things happening. One is we're looking at a specific book. We need that process to play itself out.
Correct.
The second thing is we need to look at the process, and I know that people on, you know, both sides and in the middle want to make sure that we have a fair process. And I think we have to defer to the superintendent to kind of give him time, even just being here a year, to really dig in. And didn't realize we were quite going to have, you know, this kind of an explosion, you know, this early in his tenure. But we have to give him some time to kind of look at the process, look at the policies. We're not here tonight to talk about any one book that's not on the agenda, and, you know, nobody's going to censor books or put books back on a shelf right now. So the process is in place, and I think we have to let the process play out. It may not be fast enough for many people, and, you know, I apologize for that, but we want to have a fair process. And that's what's happening now, and I think let's let the process play out, and then we can at least have a discussion. We don't like the process, we like the process. Depending on, it doesn't matter how they end up with this book, is the process fair or not, and then move on from there. So we're not going to have this discussion tonight, though.
I just want to be clear. So we want to have a review, we want to have a future discussion on the book review process itself. I think that's probably most appropriate after we've gone through the process for this particular book, hearing what you had to say, Dr. Hunt. Right? We don't want to come across as reviewing it midstream of this particular book being reviewed.
You know, I guess...
Is that okay?
You know, I guess my perspective is, just to not further delay, you know, if I heard, if I recall, I think I heard that because of administrative leaves and just summer schedules, this won't be completed until September. I'm not sure... I'm not sure that we can wait until September to review the process. I don't, I think we can review the process, but keep the same process for the book in question. Does that make sense? Meaning, we don't change the process midstream, but we still review it so that in anticipation of that, of its completion, we're right to the ground running with how we...
And just to be clear, to do this right, it's not just read it and come here and say, this is what it says. I mean, there's national best practice, there's, you know, our own staff that would have to be involved in that conversation. This isn't just a, I can turn this around in a week, this is going to take some time. So, just be aware, if you want it done right and done well, it's going to take some time. And, you know, a lot of these decisions are, where do we want to prioritize and where do we want to spend the time? The board is telling me they want to look at this, I will propose a timeframe that's reasonable for our staff to get the information together and bring it back to you for a conversation.
So, can you also include in that how much time it's going to take? Because we do have a lot of priorities that, that we've agreed to address this year as well.
Yeah, and I would, I would say that, you know, education of our children is still our number-one job here, which is, you know, we had a presentation last week, or whenever we met last, about our test scores. You know, school is starting, we really need to focus on education as our number-one priority. I'm not saying that this is not incredibly important as well, but, you know, we are a school district to educate children. So, I really don't want to, I don't want this to fall off of the radar, but I also don't want to prioritize this as school is starting, that we need to re-review the book review process and have a new system in place by the start of school. I feel like the process has started, the books have been taken to be reviewed, et cetera, and that process is ongoing. So, that's, I, there's so much work to be done, and I really think that making sure that our kids get a quality, top-notch education is, at least from my perspective, the number-one job of the Board of Education, so.
Thank you, Angela. I would agree, and then just add student safety, right? Student and staff safety. Okay? All right. We are going to move to public comments. As a board, value your thoughts and opinions, and in accordance with our board policy, we ask you to state your name and either your attendance area or your relationship to the district before beginning your comments. We're going to limit your comments this evening to two minutes, because we've got more than 20 speakers. We are going to ensure that all voices are respected and heard, and in accordance with our board equity statement that states that we recognize, embrace, and possess the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. And per our school policy, the school district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property. We are committed to addressing the issues and not attacking people, and we ask the community to do the same. I ask you, please, please to be kind. If the crowd is too disruptive, I will be calling a break, in which the board will leave through this door, and we're committed to the Open Meetings Act and not violating it. So, please, let's not be disruptive and let's not delay the meeting. If someone else has represented your views, please do not feel the need to repeat their comments, instead, consider standing to show your support. And I've seen a lot of signs that are brought in here, and been asked also to keep the signs below your head, so we're not blocking the view of everybody in the room. We ask that these actions do not delay or impede the public comment or the work of the board. As a reminder, public comment is not a conversation, and it does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Hunt to follow up and report back to the board. My role tonight is to lead us through this meeting, and per our board protocols, okay? Please be attentive and listen for your name to be called. I'm going to call up, because we've got so many, I'm going to call up two at a time, so that we can try to get through this quickly.
Can I just add, that rude person in back holding her sign up, we are filming this for the rest of the community. Not everybody is here. They want to see our meeting, they want to hear what you have to say. The signs are blocking, and we've got many complaints about the signs blocking. I understand people feel very strongly about this, but please, keep them at your face value, at your face level. Up here, you're blocking people's views, and your community wants to be part of this, too, just because they're not here. So, please be fair.
Okay, let us begin. As per our past practices, I'm going to allow Kevin Morrison, our Cook County Commissioner, to come forward first. Whatever, whatever you're comfortable with, and we do have a timer here to remind you of your time. That's the microphone, yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kevin Morrison, I'm Cook County Commissioner of the 15th District, which includes all of Barrington Township. First, I would like to thank the District 220 School Board members, who have a thankless, yet critical role for our community. I'm coming to speak tonight as the first ever and currently only LGBTQ Cook County Commissioner. I was once that queer kid in school that desperately wanted to not have to hide who I was out of fear of rejection, bullying, or violence. Despite living in that closet, I experienced all of that. At previous meetings and tonight, that this is not just about one book, this is not just about affirming sex education. The words we're hearing are not different than what we're seeing in other parts of the country with anti-LGBTQ legislation that's being pursued, and we know that this language is dangerous, it causes violence. So, I'm here today because there are queer kids within 220. We saw just last year, a trans student on school property shot with a pellet gun. That is unacceptable action. Do I get my time back? Well, I would like to speak to the LGBTQ youth that are listening today. You are perfect who you are, you are loved for exactly who you are, you deserve to feel represented and seen in the books you read and the history you learn, and there are so many people here to support you. I'm so sorry that you have to endure listening to enormously harmful words shared by some of the adults in our community. Last year alone, 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered suicide. Forty-five percent of LGBTQ youth seriously considered suicide. Having curriculum that is affirming to the queer students that attend your schools is critical. They deserve to be seen, and we deserve to support that.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. I allowed him a few extra seconds because he was interrupted. Let's please try to be respectful and not interrupt. Next up is Jenna Shields, and then Tara Nielsen.
Hi, my name is Jenna Shields, I'm a parent of Barrington 220, two children. First, I want to thank Dr. Hunt for not adopting 818. Thank you so much for listening to Common Sense, Parents, and the Community. I'm here to alert the board, if you don't already know, that a petition has been circulated throughout our Barrington community. It's posted on the new independent www.district220.com family forum website, if you don't follow social media. To date, the rapidly growing petition has more than 1,300 signatures from concerned citizens, family, and taxpayers. The petition highlights there are two significant matters that we were wishing to resolve. One, thanks to Dr. Hunt, has been resolved with SB 818. The second was the need to filter obscene and pornographic content across all media and resources. So, the media, that content has been promoted by the teachers and is available to our students. The idea of parents having to filter for this or routinely opt out is unacceptable. While many policies exist to address obscene or pornographic content, the school library policy still needs to be updated. We ask that an independent task force that includes parent representation be developed, a rating system similar to movies and TV, as well as a way to report inappropriate content. We also need training on how to handle these student inquiries about adult content and conversations, referring to students, referring to the parents and guardians. So, thank you very much again, Dr. Hunt, and thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. After Tara will be Shannon Finis.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Tara Nielsen, and I am a concerned parent. I came here tonight to state my opposition to using any part of the National Sex Education Standards in the curriculum here at Barrington School District 220. I want to begin by looking at where these standards came from. They were written by a nonprofit advocacy group known as Future of Sex Education Initiative in partnership with Advocates for Youth, ANCER, and PSYCHUS, with contributions from Gender Spectrum, Human Rights Campaign, Planned Parenthood, and a number of other extreme advocacy groups. These are not education standards written by academics, but rather ideologies advocated by these groups to push an agenda. We must push back on this agenda, it's harmful to the health and safety of our children. They tell our children they can be whatever gender they choose, they advocate for allowing gender-affirming therapies, puberty blockers, and cross-sex hormones without parents' knowledge. They want us to believe children are sexual at birth and begin experiencing sexual pleasure at a very young age. They are extreme activists who have made their way into mainstream education. It's not for me to judge adults who choose to live alternative lifestyles. They have the God-given free will to make their own choices in life, but I take exception when I, when they think it's okay to push these lifestyles on our young children. Their ideologies have no place in our public schools, they do irreparable damage to our children, these new standards are not appropriate. How is the age appropriate to teach children in grades three through five all about romantic and sexual feelings and masturbation? How is the age appropriate to require sixth through eighth graders to define vagina, anal, and oral sex? No part of these standards are acceptable, we're pleading with you to review the curriculum that's currently being used here at Barrington Schools and leave it at that. Thank you very much.
After Shannon will be Susan Jensen.
Hi, my name is Shannon Finis. Next year will be my 21st year teaching physics at Barrington High School. I also live in the district and have two children attending Grow. Next year, they will be in first and third grade. I'm here today to stand up for the opportunity for our children to have a choice in the books they can check out at the school library. I understand completely that there are books in the library that offend us. It is said that a good library has a book that could offend anyone. Censoring award-winning books because some people do not agree with the content is a slippery slope. Not everyone has the same religion, morals, and values. Choosing to censor, ban, and remove books that represent the trials of teen LGBTQ community leads to further ignorance of a community that already feels misunderstood and marginalized. That ignorance leads to hurt feelings, further marginalization, and bullying. Describing this as dangerous is not too strong. LGBTQ students are the highest-risk group for suicide. The Trevor Project found that 52% of LGBTQ youth who were enrolled in middle school or high school reported being bullied either in person or electronically, and those who did had three times greater odds of attempting suicide. All students should be able to see themselves represented in our schools. We need to include and accept all students and give all students a chance to be fully welcomed into our classroom and community. The Board Policy Manual states in Section 610 that the district objectives are to foster students' self-discovery, self-awareness, and self-discipline, develop students' awareness of appreciation for cultural diversity. The District Equity Website states, Barrington is focused on creating and maintaining an environment of diversity, inclusion, and respect in our school system and in all aspects of our school community. I love my students, that is why I teach. I love my own children. I love the Barrington School District, which is why I chose to spend my career here and bring my family here to participate in it. I'm not advocating to force any student to read any book they are not comfortable with. I'm advocating for the right for my children to have access to books they may eventually want to seek out. We should not be spending our time trying to censor, ban, or erase the experiences of an already vulnerable population. We should instead direct our precious time to supporting the education of our children.
Thank you, Shannon. Susan? And after Susan will be Emily Young. Susan, yeah. After you will be Emily Young.
I'm a Barrington area resident, Barrington High School alumni. My daughter is part of the queer community and has had suicidal thoughts and has been hospitalized for those thoughts. My name is Susan Jensen.
Thank you.
I'm thankful to have a chance to speak tonight. I was very sorry to see that a group of parents is working very hard to ban the book Gender Queer. Parents have the right to guide their children's reading, but parents should not be making decisions for other parents' children. Specifically, a small group of parents should not dictate what books other people's children are allowed to read. Books are tools for understanding complex issues. Limiting young people's access to books does not protect them from life's complex and challenging issues. Even if they're not in the library, many books can be found for free online, as well as through apps at the public library, so kids will find them whether you ban them or not. Young people deserve to see themselves reflected in libraries' books. Reading a book does not make one straight, gay, bisexual, transgender, or non-binary. We should be very careful not to sexualize any person because of their sexuality or gender. Thinking that the LGBTQIA equals just sex or porn is so damaging to young members of the community, of our community. Everyone deserves a healthy relationship with their body, their self, and their sexuality. There can be elements of the LGBTQIA culture that is hypersexualized, but the same can be said of heterosexual culture. Take cheerleading or volleyball uniforms, or even our football uniforms. We don't seem to mind those in those cases, as well as books in the library of heterosexual nature. All kids want to express themselves, which is normal, acceptance matters, it's been proven to save lives. Many in the LGBTQIA community do not have allies, and reading about similar people can help them know they are normal, they exist, they are human beings. Removing and banning books from libraries is a slippery slope to censorship and the erosion of our country's commitment to freedom of expression. If one book is banned, what's to stop the next and the next? Thank you very much.
After Emily will be Sylvia Toman.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emily Young, and I am a resident in town. I'm also a trustee on the Village Board of Barrington. I care deeply about our community, especially the young people who call our town home. As was mentioned earlier this evening, education is of the utmost importance when we're planning the education of our children in our town, and that extends to quality sex and relationships education at school. This education protects children against abuse and harassment, helps them develop healthy relationship skills, and improves their social and emotional learning, media literacy, and academic performance. For a long time in America, sex education has failed students by denying them an education on important topics like STDs, consent, and healthy sexual relationships. Now, we have an opportunity to move forward, and I hope that we will continue, consider that instead of moving backwards. Now, I know that we're talking about books, and it's been said that we're not considering any book in particular, but I've noticed a lot of the books that have come up have been queer-specific books, and I think that's important to keep in mind, because the books that are being discussed deal with questions of sexual identity. But there are students in our community who are asking these questions, and so while you're saying these might be mature topics, that's the reality of a lot of teenagers today. They're asking these questions and they're looking to resources for answers. As a public school, Barrington District 220 has a responsibility to our LGBTQ youth to provide library resources that support their health and well-being. Books like these that are being discussed can be a lifeline to queer youth who often have to look outside their home for representation and information. Teenagers need representative stories and sex education that matters. Getting rid of either would be a disservice to future generations and to our community as a whole. Thank you.
Emily, I just want to say, apologize if I didn't read all the names, so if you want to put, you know, remind me you're a trustee on the comments, and I'll make sure you get up first, as I would any other representative. Okay, Sylvia.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Sylvia Toman. I'm reading this email on behalf of Ashley Kumar, who has two kids at station and one at Roslyn because she couldn't be here tonight. "We moved here from Elgin nine years ago for better schools and always heard nice things about Barrington. We have been dealing with some issues for a while now, things have changed in the worst kind of way. I'm seriously considering homeschooling and asking my aunt to come in and help, she's a retired teacher. First of all, my middle school son has a kid that repeatedly masturbates in the classroom. The teacher has removed him from the class and had discussions in the hallway several times. I've emailed the teacher with my concerns. Why oh why is this happening? My son is more than distracted by it," and I say that politely. My son is more than distracted by it," and I say that politely. "Other kids notice it, too. Does this happen a lot? Why are they doing this? Unfortunately, that's not all. My daughter, again a middle schooler, had two things happen to her. She was in the girls' bathroom stall going to the bathroom, and two stalls over, she heard noises. Sounded like boys, she said, so she finished up and started to head to the sink. When her friend walked in and went towards that stall, the door was now open. She saw two boys having oral sex in the stall. By now, I'm not only mortified, but I'm angry. Why is this happening, and why isn't anyone doing anything about it? I've talked to the principal, teachers, and other parents, and yet I get vague responses. I'm sick of it. It's affecting my kids in a negative way. I'm having to explain things in the nicest way possible. I want to protect my kids from this. What can we do as parents? I'm contacting you because I see you and other moms are working hard to stop this over-sexualization of kids in our school district. Oh, and the other thing that happened. She saw the video that was sent around of the two middle schoolers doing oral sex on each other. Why would anyone do that? I can't undo what she saw. It's horrible. My husband and I keep saying why. I feel like the reason..." Thank you.
Tom Habley. After Tom will be Rebecca Riley.
I'll just stand over here if it's all right.
You can stand, that's fine.
Just speak loudly, that's great.
Just try to stay close to the microphone here. It will pick you up, yep.
Tom Habley, my name. I have grandchildren in the elementary school in Barrington. I'm a retired educator of about 50 years. I spent most of my life talking with adolescents, listening to adolescents, coaching them. The last 25 years, I was a clinical counselor with them, and I couldn't help it as I listened here, hear all these problems. And, but I never heard the word drugs. That's a massive problem, and whatever you can do as a school system, you have prevention programs for that, because a lot of these behaviors are poor impulse control that comes from drug involvement. A lot of people do not know that the adolescent brain, somewhere sixth, seventh, eighth grade, actually stops growing, and they call it pruning. You see, it actually stops, and parts of the brain are now used for other things. In that interval, there is no cerebral cortex where going through the brain, processing emotions, anything from the back of the brain, instinctual stuff. All, so many of these problems we hear all the time, and as this government normalized marijuana, that was a bad move. That was a very bad move. So I would encourage the board to continue prevention program works. I would continue, and maybe the best thing I can offer you is get a book.
Can you please wrap up?
I will.
Minute is up.
Be a little assertive here. The best book you can buy to help understand is Adolescent Psyche.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Rebecca Riley? I'd ask you to keep the clapping to minimum so people can hear me. Rebecca Riley, I called you up. Thought I saw her here. There she is. After Rebecca will be Karen Savard.
I'm also reading a letter tonight from another parent who couldn't attend tonight. Her name is Amanda Rawson. She has one child at station. "When our middle school daughter saw the video posted of the two boys performing oral sex on one another in the bathroom at school. The video that went viral among students and sparked what we thought would be public outrage. Why, again, is this happening in our schools? Fast forward a month later, my daughter also witnessed another student who frequently masturbated in the classroom. Again, why is this happening in our schools? What is going on? Our daughter was a straight A student with many friends and social activities. When her moods changed and her grades started slipping, we knew something was very wrong. As she became more withdrawn, we realized we had to get help. After talking with a school counselor and her pediatrician, we got a referral for her to see a clinical psychologist. After weeks of therapy, our daughter unpacked her feelings, results, worse than we ever expected. In short, the doctor told us our daughter had thoughts of suicide and felt isolated due to the growing new trend of gender identity. She wanted to feel accepted by everyone, but she could not cope with the pressures of hearing about girls experimenting, making out with other girls, and boys performing oral sex on each other in school bathrooms. It was too traumatizing and confusing for her, the doctor explained to us. She's a great kid. Our family values and Christian beliefs don't align with this. Kids don't regulate these experience -- these experiences the way adults do, our pediatrician told us. They can't cope, so they shut down. To be brief, our daughter is still in therapy. She may never fully recover from the mental trauma. What has occurred at school is not only negligible but criminal. Cultivating this assault on our children is completely... ...us that kids being exposed to porn and being overtly sexualized at such a young age has many risks and dangers."
Thank you, Karen. Karen Savard? All right, we'll move on. Cory Fittis? I really don't have to do that. I'll give you another minute, but I really don't have to do that, and we've got like 30 more people to go. Actually, I don't have to do that. Please take one more minute.
We need to create, we don't need to create another unhinged, confused, over-sexualized kid in this community. One is way too many. I think we all saw what happened in Highland Park, and I think we all have seen a lot of things. I'm so sorry. Thank you for being here. Yes. So everyone, you know what these books are about. You've seen them. They're way too graphic for kids. At a young age, you can ask any clinical psychologist. Kids aren't supposed to be seeing this. How many in this room could stand up right now and tell me you don't want your kids to see this in school? How many people in this room have signed this petition? What's the number now? Over 1,300 and growing?
Growing.
And this petition is out for how many days? Two or three days? Three days? I don't think there's any argument here. This community doesn't want to see this. It's overwhelming. It's harmful to kids. It's pornography. It's obscene, and a lot of kids are getting hurt by it. This kid almost committed suicide, not because he was trying to figure out if he was gay or not, or wanted to be trans -- or wanted to be transgender. The kid almost committed suicide because of peer pressure and couldn't cope.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you. Cory. Cory Fittis?
All you behave as a choice.
Yes, yes, thank you.
To have porn as a choice.
The floor is at Cory Fittis, please. Do not start this timer yet. Cory, thank you. After Cory will be Laura Dominiac. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say, as a parent of three children who have either graduated or continue to be in 220, I come with you with these remarks. I appreciate the teachers, librarians, for their professional qualifications and how they utilize them to choose these books. These are not regular people off the street who are deciding these titles. They're award-winning books. They're off-Linkens list. These are generally agreed to be award-winning books. These are people's experiences, and we need to see those in Barrington. They are in Barrington. People just need to open their eyes to them. If you have, if parents have issues with some of these titles, I would suggest that this is a parental issue and for values that the parents should be talking to their kids about, about whether they should be taking those books out or not and not removing those choices for everybody's children. In coming here tonight, I spoke with my three children about the titles in question that were indicated on this petition that they're mentioning, and my 20-year-old son said he hadn't heard of them. My daughter also hadn't heard of them. My son suggested that students who did need to look at these books or were seeking those out would find something in them that they, that they could appreciate and see themselves in. There is value in them. Also, as a avid reader, I find sometimes that I read a book and I don't enjoy the book. I simply put the book down. There is nothing in Barrington requiring these books be taken out by students. I asked them about library policies. They have choices on what materials that they take out. It's not assigned. So if you feel a certain way, your children, don't take out the book, but don't remove the choice for the rest of us, and I think that you're just putting your head in your sand, in the sand, if you think that these issues don't affect Barrington.
Speaker is speaking, or we will call a break. Laura Dominiac. After Laura is going to be Melody Angelos. We need to make sure the speaker feels safe and can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Laura Dominiac. I have a child who's going into the sixth grade. I've never spoken in a meeting before. I tend to keep to myself. I'm not one into drama, but I watched the last board meeting, and I have to say that I found it really alarming, and I wanted the board to know that although that there's a very vocal group of parents who believe very fervently about their thoughts, that there's also a large majority, I believe, of parents in the district who don't necessarily share the same views. But I think that those views might not be heard as loudly for a number of reasons. Number one, I think it's easier just to kind of be quiet, especially if you're somebody like me who doesn't like to speak out very much in public. Because of the nature of what we're talking about here, I think there's a lot of parents who are afraid that if they speak out and say, "No, I want a book like Gender Queer in our libraries," that they're going to be labeled as a pedophile or somebody who's promoting pornography. But when I, when I listen to this, I remember very clearly a day, I used to be a schoolteacher, and I was teaching in Berlin, Germany, and then one of my favorite memorials is in the middle of a Babelsbergplatz in Berlin, and it's this empty library that you walk up, you don't even see it, and then there's this library with all white bookcases, no books in them whatsoever. But there's a door leading to it, and you kind of want to go in there, put books back on the shelves like they're supposed to be, but you can't because you can't go back in history, right? There is a plaque with a quote from somebody, Heinrich, she wrote it down. What is it? What is his name? Heinrich, Heinrich Nein. He wrote 1822, and his quote is part of a play, says, "This was just the beginning."
Finish the quote, please, R.
Where they start to burn, or in this case, ban books, they will in the end burn people too. My, I have so much more I wanted to say, and if somebody else wants, it's going to be speaking, let me know.
I have to ask that you allow me to call the names so we can proceed. Melody Angelos, and then Monica Casey.
Yes, I'm Melody Angelos. I've lived in Barrington for 36 years. I've put three children through District 220, and I have six grandchildren in District 220. One is a sixth grader going to station in the fall. I can't believe that a teacher would recommend a book with that kind of material in it to a sixth grader. It's not appropriate. It's not right. Besides that, the kids lost a year and a half of education during COVID, and I wrote to every board member here. I think you guys need to be focusing on getting that education back to these kids and finding a way to help them catch up because they lost that. They did. And I don't know if you realize, there's a lot of grandparents in this district that would be willing to come in and help at the schools if they were asked, and I think that's a research, resource you're not using. But the, the sixth grade stuff, it's not age-appropriate, and it really shouldn't be there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Melody. Monica Casey. After Monica is Margot Zada-Robel.
Hi. Excuse me. I'm Monica Casey. I've been in the district for over 17 years, have three children that went through the district, and our youngest is a junior. I want to thank Dr. Hunt for his affirmation that the main priority here at District 220 is education and excellence and leadership and having, having the curriculum based on mutual respect of all, all people. Affirming that education, the core, the core education is, is our key to making successful children in their future regardless of the path they take, and I appreciate you considering our voices over the last couple of weeks with our letters. I wanted to be clear that our position with a lot of the people here and the petition that was together had nothing to do with the elimination of sex education in our schools. It had nothing to do with banning books, or discrimination, or shaming, or having any phobia or hate toward any type of group. It was about preserving integrity and having age-appropriate content in our schools. For your information, the SV818 standards and the opting out of all the schools, right now, 446 have opted out and only 18 have opted in in Illinois. That's over 50% have opted out, so I want to congratulate those who joined in. So introducing these sexual explicit topics, among others, at these early ages can alienate children, have them lose trust, not feel safe, and can definitely marginalize their ability to learn. These policies can be manipulative, create excessive pressure and anxiety for children and teachers alike, and they place instructors and administration in a state of predilection that's borderline predatory. A new curriculum is a huge and unnecessary financial burden for the district as well. It's absolutely necessary to allocate the resources towards shortfalls
Thank you.
and focus on what we've lost, and so that they can make up for lost time.
Thank you. After Margot Zada-Robel is Magdalena Martes. Magdalena Martes, you're up next.
Good afternoon. Mother of three in the district, fourth one maybe in a year. Let's see.
Your name is?
Margot Zada-Robel. First, kind of wanted to contradict the previous speaker that said that everything about sexual education is all great. I mean, let's stick to health ed, anatomy, that's what they need to know. American Academy of Pediatrics, this is one of the country's leading authority on pediatric care. This is just one of many credible sources you might want to research on porn exposure versus kids' mental health. Quote, "Sexual predators have purposefully exposed young children to pornography for the purpose of grooming children for sexual exploitation. Pornography exposure at these young ages often results in anxiety for the child. Children also report feeling of disgust, shock, embarrassment, anger, fear, and sadness after viewing pornography. These children can suffer all of the symptoms of anxiety and depression. They may become obsessed with acting out adult sexual acts that they have seen, and this can be very disruptive and disturbing to the child's peers who witness or are victimized by this behavior. Children under 12 years old who have viewed pornography are statistically more likely to sexually assault their peers. In sum, children exposed to pornographic material are at risk for a broad range of maladaptive behavior and psychopathology." So a copy of this, along with Transgender's Connection with Pornography, it's undeniable, was handed out to you, so I suggest this for a midnight reading. It's, it's a very touching one. And Highland Park shooter, the mother was exposing herself to police. She was posting her nude pictures all over, just, you know, barely covered. She was posting her nude pictures all over, just, you know, barely covered. This was another over-sexualized child. We've seen the results. Anger, the kid pretty much did what he did. Do we feel sorry? Yes, of course we feel sorry, but it's too late. So we need to prevent this. We can't have a next generation of shooters. And look at what's happening. There's one after another, one after another. Granted, internet is an option, but we need to make sure those books are
Magdalena Martes. After Magdalena will be Anastasia Andrews.
Hello, everyone. I'm a new face as I moved in and considering whether my children should go to the school.
Please state your name first.
Sure. Magdalena Montes. You announced me. Sorry about that. Magdalena Montes. I'm a, I'm a new resident, new taxpayer to the district. I'm proud of my children. However, I was considering the movement of parents and the community involvement by all of you, by all of the taxpayers, friends, family, et cetera. And this is the location that we've chosen for our children. However, I am very concerned to re-enroll my kids after this homeschool environment for the last year into the community setting. You are, Dr. Hunt, you are giving me a glimmer of hope by rejecting the SB 818. However, it's still not a final decision. I wanted to echo something, Sandra. I'm learning everybody's names that you've said. When you see something, you say something. The community is seeing things and is saying something and they're not provided a safe space. They're being belittled. They're being shamed. Their children are being shamed. Me pulling my children from school is also targeting my kids. So Mr. Morrison, you grew up to be a successful leader and speaker. So clearly, the school system didn't fail you. Allow my children the same opportunity to not be sexualized but focus on education. I commend you for picking up. I commend you for supporting like others, but that can happen outside of school. Create something within your means of leadership, but leave the school for math, for learning, for learning of history. There doesn't need to be anything else. So please, use the taxpayers' money wisely, not to go back and, and find the one time somebody bullied you. And you know what? I don't see them, maybe they failed and like, but you've succeeded. To use your platform to go back to the educational standards that you were offered because clearly they've provided you success. So I hope that I will be given an opportunity to re-enroll my children once the school year starts. Thank you very much, Dr. Hunt.
Okay, Anastasia Andrews. After Anastasia will be Greg Zinn.
Hi, my name's Anastasia.
I can hear you, Anastasia.
I am a resident of the district for 28 years. And, Dr. Hunt, thank you for the update on SB 818. I know that was something that was pending for quite some time and causing a lot of anxiety to a lot of parents in the district. I'd like to respond to one thing. We actually, we are the majority and we do not appreciate the faculty that are choosing the porn books to be available and easily accessible to children. So that needs to be said. No matter what teacher, former teacher, current teacher who has children of a certain gender or any other mental illness that they might be suffering that has absolutely nothing to do with porn books in the library. So we'd like to know what the exact procedure is for this book procurement. Who, including names, titles, approved the books in our library? What's the review process? I know we heard a little bit about that, but it's not very clear, especially those of us in the room paying attention right now. The verification process, the checks and balances? We're kind of tired of hearing FOIA. It's not our job to review every single book in the library. It's your job to make sure they don't get into the library. This district is 100% responsible for those books and you are liable, and you're liable for your faculty's decisions. So Angela, thank you for what you said last meeting, highlighting that. Steve and Katie, thank you for standing up to us and supplying, and defending us on the pornographic material in the minors. And just one more thing, I just want to point out. Jim, hi, how are you doing today? Jim McGrath, Indivisible, Illinois. He's a self-proclaimed expert on the right-wing extremists targeting high school and college students such as Turning Point and Young America Foundation. Jim claims that he's a social justice warrior.
Okay. We're not going to attack. We are not. I'm going to have to ask you to stop. Thank you. Thank you very much. Cut the mics. I need to say, thank you. Thank you. We're, I'm going to remind everyone to not attack people. I'm going to ask one more time that we not attack any people and we not delay the meeting any further. Are you Greg Zinn?
I am. I'm going to yield my time to Terry.
Terry, please say your name, the district.
Hello, my name's
And your relationship to the district, please.
Yes. Hello, my name's Terry Yormark. I'm a resident of South Barrington. Thank you for all of your level-headed conversations and questions to begin this meeting. It's appreciated. Look, guys, I don't want to be here. I'm a father. My number one job in life is to protect my children and that's why I'm reluctant. I was originally going to come up here and read from the fourth grader's book entitled Lawn Boy, but that language and content isn't even appropriate for this material that you see here today. You cut the mic off, just like the school board did in Florida to bother that was simply just reading the book passages. Instead, let me try a more tactful route. I love America. I love our country. You know what I like best about our country? We're the most understanding and welcoming place on earth. We are fully accepting of all religions, colors, beliefs, personal decisions, and so on. We don't care what the heck you do behind closed doors. You'd be hard-pressed to find any of these people that do. You guys do you. But here's where it becomes a problem. When you force your ideas, your beliefs, your religion, your practices on us. That's why as a society, we don't like that pushy used car salesman. We don't like to knock on the door, try to convince us to change our religion. We don't like that tell marketer telling us, trying to upsell us on anything. We don't like it when we're pushed. But you know why this room is filled? You know what really pisses us off? When you push your ideas and your beliefs on our kids, that's where we draw this line at the same. Teach your 10-year-old boy about blowjobs from that Lawn Boy book, go right ahead. Do it behind closed doors. But don't you dare extend that freedom to feel like it's your responsibility or your right to teach that to my child, my child. Let them be kids. Teach my kids about being kind to one another. Teach them about sharing.
Thank you, Terry.
I'm the next speaker. Thank you.
I do not need to yield the time. So we're going to move to the next speaker?
He was the speaker before me. I'm the next speaker.
I understand, but we do not have to do that. We have, we still have more than 20 speakers to go.
I'm the next speaker live. He was the first speaker.
I understand. I'm going to give you one minute like I gave the former person. One more minute, please. One more minute.
That's real fair. Thank you.
You know what? I'm just going to take a break if you, if you don't extend longer than one minute. One more minute and then that's it.
Do you know why our kids, do you know why our kids are not being taught? Do you know why our kids are not being taught about what's going on in Russia or the oil crisis or the bond markets or the stock market? Do you know why? Because their minds are not complex enough right now to understand that. That's the same reason you can't be teaching them about this crap, because their minds are not fully developed. I have a question for all of you. When you were young, what did you want? You wanted kids to be kids. You just wanted to be a kid. Well, you know what? These kids just want to be kids right now. Why don't you go back to when you were a kid and remember that? Let them be kids.
Thank you. Chris Jaeger and then Andy Spentos?
I'd like to yield my time to Andy Spentos.
Okay, we're not yielding time.
So I guess I'm going to get three minutes, right?
You get, you get two minutes.
Two and one minute, because everybody else did. My name is Andy Spentos. From the last meeting, June 21st, I learned a lot. I realized all the people, I realized that all the people I reached out to had no idea what was going on. Zero on understanding what's going on today. They were all in shock. They said, "Why would they want to do this?" The books are straight-up pornography and they need to be removed and no questions asked. I keep hearing from other people here that they've been bullied, there's issues growing up because of what route they wanted to take. I have no problem with that. I, I don't want anybody to be bullied. I love everyone equally. I really do. I have friends of all kind of race and, like I said in my last speech, I'm friends with everybody. And I don't want anybody to be bullied. I love everybody equally. Now, there might be some that say these books are needed for my child, as I heard today. If that's the case, you could go on Amazon, order the book, take it behind doors, read what you want to read. Read it at home. I have no problem with that. I don't need a book that my son could accidentally check it out and open it and be shocked. It's just like turning the TV on, on the wrong channel and you're traumatized. You could pull a book out and be traumatized. If someone needs that book, no problem. Order it yourself. We don't need this in our school. It's pornography. You see what it shows. A dick in another guy's hand, sucking on it. It sounds disgusting and horrible, but that's what the book shows. Vagina slime. I've never heard of such a thing. If my son reads that, he's going to be shocked. I don't have a problem with anybody, but it's not acceptable for my kids. Anybody thinks this book is acceptable, come get me outside, explain to me why, and I'll push for you guys. But that is not right. This has, this has nothing to do with hate. I promise you, I don't hate anybody. Anybody that knows me, I'm there for them. Or being homophobic. I hear rumors out there that we're homophobic. That's not true. This is strictly, has to do with, we don't want our kids to have access to this or taught with these books. Also, if any kid, anybody, any kid needs help because they're struggling with certain things, you should reach out to our school district because we're supposedly one of the best districts and they will help you out personally. I have reached out to our school to help with my kids and they did a great job. Just ask for help. Furthermore, when we are talking about sex education, it should start and stop strictly with reproduction and the male and female organs. That's it. It's not to teach people how to perform sexual acts prior to introduction of this new way of teaching sex education. Had nothing to do with training people how to perform oral sex in a heterosexual environment. Now that, now that it's bisexual or homosexual, all of a sudden, we are teaching people how to perform sexual acts and changing the way it's being taught from the productive system to actually sex acts. Now, if you are a parent and need more for your child, feel free to teach them what they want.
Thank you, Andy.
I want like two minutes because, okay.
All right. Thank you.
He's going to get his two minutes.
Can you please state your name?
Chris Jaeger. This has to be read.
You get, you get the rest of the one minute.
If I feel that I
Hold on.
We love filming and taking pictures of people within this room.
Okay.
I want my two minutes from him because I'm speaking. This is, this is for our district. This is for the good. It's not for the bad. Okay?
Everybody else has followed the same, the same
He has two minutes. I have two minutes.
You've already spoken for three. Sorry.
Okay, I have one more minute then.
No, he has one minute if you want to give it to me.
I'd like to yield my one minute back to him.
I'm just trying to be consistent.
Can you read?
Just read out. I'll hold it. Okay, just say. Let's see. If I, if I feel that I need to teach my child further than what I just said, I would be the one who's going to be taking or talking to my kids with nobody else. Furthermore, I am proud to see everyone that showed up. For the last week, I've been making personal phone calls and text messaging to everyone that I know. And like I said, almost all of them were clueless, but they said this was unacceptable and we will come and support everyone and be there for our kids. By applauding, who came here to put up a, by applauding, who came here to put a stop to this agenda? As you can see, that would be a majority of the people of this school opt out of 18 acre, or let's see. As, as you can see, the majority is against what we are trying to push these, push. Please put this to an end. 54% of the schools have opt out. 18 are on hold.
Thank you both very much. Next up is Kristi Johnson and then Sophia Eamon. Okay, Kristi. Thank you. Sophia Eamon and then Gina Williams.
Hi, my name is Sophia Eamon. I am a mother of six. I have children at Countryside, Prairie, and Barrington High School. I just wanted to state that I actually appreciate having some members of the LGBTQ community here. I understand the difficulties and challenges that face these youth. I also do appreciate the previous comments made by Shannon and Emily, and I agree with a lot of what they said. Our schools need to be focused on education. The issue for me is that the content in some of these books is in question or way too sexually explicit. Reading about directives on how to give a blowjob and a handjob does not need to be in school libraries. Pictures of how to give blowjobs and hand jobs should not be in our school library. Having a brother and sister talking about fingering themselves, tasting her vagina slime is highly inappropriate and makes me very uncomfortable. This is incestuous behavior and it should not be discussed in a book that's available at a school library. I'm horrified. I can't believe anyone would think that this is inclusive versus pornographic content. Why can't there be queer books or LGBTQ representative books that don't have explicit sexual content? There is so much more involved in a healthy relationship other than having sex, giving hand jobs, getting blowjobs. This is not what a gay relationship is about. It's not just about sex. And I think you guys would agree with me. It's not about having a brother and sister fingering themselves. Like, this is outrageous. I can't even believe that this wouldn't be polled immediately and not even reviewed. If my six kids ever saw this content, I would be mortified. Absolutely mortified. This is completely like X-rated. I don't even see this in movies, in R-rated movies. And we're having this in our school. I just really want everything to be focused on education. I want kids to feel included and not excluded and not bullied and not want to commit suicide. But this isn't the answer. Showing them how to do these acts in fourth grade, talking about a fourth grader getting blowjobs is completely irrelevant and not acceptable.
Thank you, Sophia. Gina Williams and Jessica Spentos. After Gina Williams?
Hi, good evening. I'm Gina Williams. I have three kids in the district. Elementary school is Roslin Road. I just Oh, is that better? I just wanted to say regarding all of the discussion regarding the, the book content, this is not about, I know this has been said many times, but I feel like it can't be said enough. This is not about the fact that it is LGBTQIA content. There are hundreds of books in the district that are wonderful for feelings of inclusion and, and kids wanting to identify with someone who's like them. This is about porn. It's about porn. It's, it's inappropriate graphics in a book that is accessible with a middle school sign-on to the, to the Barrington High School online library. I checked on my own kid's iPad. That means someone in sixth grade could get the ebook. So I just want to clarify that. This isn't about any kind of hate. If there was, if there was some other content, heterosexual content, we would be just as outraged. It's just what's there and shouldn't be there. There's public libraries for that. We're talking about school libraries. We're asking you to please protect our children, protect their innocence. Please keep this out of the school libraries. Thank you.
Jessica Spentos and after Jessica is Marsha McCleary.
Hi there. My name is Jessica Spentos. I am a mom of three, two in the district. And first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Hunt for your recommendation for SB 818. As a mother, as a teacher, I'm very pleased with your recommendation. I'd like to take a moment to read some of the comments left on the petition that was put together by 1,300 concerned citizens. And I'm not going to name these people because they're all named. You can see it's public record. I'll just give you some quotes of what other people are feeling, people that are not here today. First and foremost, porn and obscene graphic materials do not belong in our schools. Children must have protection from this destruction. Parents have rights. I am protecting childhood. We must protect the innocence of children. Explicit content has no place in our schools. Pornographic materials can have a great mental impact on our innocent children. Say no. We can't allow this exposure to our kids. They are too precious. Age-appropriate materials should always be the main priority. Children and adolescents should live in an environment free from pornography, especially in their school. Common sense. Explicit and obscene material is not appropriate material is not appropriate for children and has no place in schools. It's time to stand up for our kids. Explicit material of any kind or persuasion has no place in schools. I can't even believe this is debatable. Schools should never provide minors with access to pornographic materials. Protect childhood and innocence. Kids get such a small window of time to be innocent. The schools do not need to expose them to this obscene sexual notions and inappropriate ideas. It's wrong. It's inappropriate. We must protect our babies. Get this poison out of our schools. Content in schools needs to be age-appropriate and District two twenty should maintain local control for sex education. I'm signing this because it is time for District two twenty to start thinking of our children's best interests and not cave to propaganda anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. After Marsha is Rich Hopper. After Marsha.
Hello, I'm Marsha McCleary. Um, thank you so much for hearing our comments and thank you for the response on SB eight eighteen. That's great news. I, that's great. Um, so I just wanted to say again, um, just to reiterate what others said, this isn't a place and a conversation about discriminating against any group of people whatsoever. It's really about the content we're showing that's age-appropriate or not. Um, just like you go and see an R-rated movie, you're going to probably view part of it first or look at the review before you take your teenager to that. It's the same thing we want to do with the books. District already has several policies and Angela mentioned one of them at the last meeting. Um, I found several more. Um, one of them is about internet safety. Um, it says that, um, uh, devices shall include filtering devices while on district network prevents minors to depictions that are obscene pornographic or harmful or inappropriate to students. We also have one that talks about, um, publications, um, in school and it talks about, um, uh, school-sponsored communications. So comply with ethics and rules of responsible journalism. Text that is levacious, obscene vulgar lewd and invades privacy of others is not, you know, basically is not allowed. I'm summarizing. Um, and you know, and there's another citing in that same policy similarly. Um, so this is, I mean, in summary, we are, this is not a new concept about content in schools. I know this has been contemplated by the district many times and we're just asking that it gets extended into the library and throughout as like a core belief of the, the process that we don't have adult content being exposed to our children and that's something that the parents make the decision on. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is just that, um, you know, we, we see, uh, the schools as a trusted place and even though these kids are going to come across this stuff on YouTube, you're right, but that's kind of in the corner. They're hiding from their parents. They're going to come across it. Sure they are. You're absolutely right. But the school's a trusted place and we expect that the morals and the ethics at school are different than them coming across something random on YouTube.
Thank you, Marsha. After Rich is Jordan Van Buren.
Hello, I'm Richard Hofer. I have two kids in two twenty. Uh, do you, I, first off, I, I wanted to, before I read this, uh, you know, most of these parents, we don't have a problem with gays. Like, I, I support the gays. We're friends with gays. I work with gay people. I'm friendly with them. They're part of our family. So, we don't have a problem with the gays. We have a problem with pornography being shown and there's definitely a distinctive difference and I, I don't want these to be blurred, those lines because I don't think if this was a book about gays that we would have any problem with that. Uh, the United Nations Convention defines a child as a human being below the age of eighteen. Uh, they are not, they are classified as unable to make serious decisions and sex and sexuality is a serious decision with many con- consequences. Under Illinois law, we cannot consent under sex under seventeen. Department of Justice, child pornography is a form of child sexual exploitation. Federal law defines child pornography as any visual depletion of sexual explicit content involving a minor. The Supreme Court has ruled that transmitting obscenity in child pornography, whether via the internet or other means, is illegal under federal law for both adults and juveniles. The Supreme Court case of Reno versus ACLU, obscenity is not protected under the First Amendment right of free speech. I'll repeat that. Obscenity is not protected under the First Amendment right of free speech and is a violation of federal obscenity laws under criminal offenses. That law passed in nineteen ninety-six makes it a crime, punishable by two years in jail and two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine for anybody engaging in speech that is indecent or offensive if the speech could be viewed by a minor. Now, I understand you guys are, we're, we're, we're an involvement of people that are trying to get a good batting average decisions and we have to be considerate of, of the gays. We have to consider them because they are part of our community. But we have to make decisions that are good for the mental well-being of our children. Just look at our society today and anxiety and depression is unacceptably off the charts and it's because of our decisions. Fix it.
Thank you, Rich. After, after Jordan is Deanna Heinz. Welcome, Jordan.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jordan. I'm a Barrington alum and I graduated in twenty eighteen. I currently have two younger brothers in high school. I believe these books should not be in Barrington two twenty school libraries because they are not necessity to, they are not necessary to the curriculum. Therefore, our schools are not the place to include these. For those who feel they need it, Barrington Public Library is a fantastic place to obtain these reading resources. As stated in Barrington District two twenties Code of Conduct, Chapter seven point twenty-seven, Clause three, they note that, quote, "Students are prohibited from accessing at school any publication that is socially inappropriate or inappropriate due to maturity levels of the students, including but not limited to material that is obscene, pornographic, or persuasively lewd or vulgar, contains indecent or vulgar language, or sexting as defined by school board policy and student handbook," end quote. Within this list of four books all available within Barrington schools, Lawn Boy, Gender Queer, This Book Is Gay, and Fighting Words, readers are exposed to a ten-year-old having sex with an adult as well as giving and receiving oral sex, explicit images of more than one individual engaging in sexual experimentation and activity, sex combinations between different individuals described in a great level of detail, how to build a profile for and join sex apps, and detailed descriptions of sexual assault. Referencing back to the clause in the Code of Conduct, the students would be accessing reading materials that violate the specifications within the clause. This argument is not about who is involved or described. It is about what acts are being described and shown and that is porn. What precedent does this set for future reading materials? Allowing these books can only open the gateway for more and more pornographic books. Thank you so much.
Deanna Heinz and then Carrie Olson. Deanna Heinz and Carrie Olson. Deanna Heinz and Carrie Olson, then Jennifer Parisi. Anyone? Why don't you go ahead?
Um, she's ahead of me. Just wait up here. Good evening. My name is Deanna Heinz and for five years of my career, I worked at a local community crisis center and presented in some of the schools in the district. I find it ironic that those who screech about free speech are so quick to shout down others and block cameras who disagree with them. If this book affends you, I suggest you talk to your own children and ignore it, the same way you ignore homelessness and suicide rates in LGBTQ youth, gun violence, hate crimes, racism, privilege, and sexual abuse within organized religion. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna.
My name is Cassie Olson. Can we hear this? My name is Cassie Olson. I'm a Roslin mom and third-generation Barrington resident. Thank you for the opt-out to SB eight one eight. That is wonderful news. I have some remaining sex ed concerns. Last month, I spoke about District two twenty making the move to teach fifth-grade sex ed in a coed setting. I was among a group of parents that raised concerns to our principal and the director of elementary curriculum about this change. I do not believe ten and eleven-year-olds should have to watch a video featuring, featuring an animated erection in a coed group. The response that the principal and director of curriculum both gave me is that a Lurie's children's rep consulted with the district and said elementary-age children should be taught sex ed in a coed setting. Lurie's children's was the buzzword that was supposed to make us stop asking questions. If a representative from a medical institution said very young children should discuss the awkwardness of their changing bodies in a coed group, parents were just supposed to accept this change. Some of us don't just accept questionable policy because we're told that the experts have spoken. At the last board meeting and in my email to the board last month, I asked you all what hard facts or specific data this Lurie's rep provided to show that it is beneficial to the majority of elementary-age students to be taught sex ed in a mixed classroom. Another community member sent a FOIA request to see the presentation that led to these changes. Two twenty has not produced the presentation, but they did provide the name of our rep from Lurie's. Do you suppose Lurie sends doctors or psychologists out to discuss medical issues and data with our district? We'll think again. Per two twenty's response to a FOIA request, the Lurie's presentation, Josephine Kearns was a Lurie's gender consultant who spoke to the District two twenty. Her resume shows a work history including roles as a high school algebra teacher, a theatrical production manager, and a gender consultant. Josephine's Instagram proclaims they are a theater artist, gender consultant, activist, and in another post, Josephine claims to be a radical. Whatever Josephine Kearns does in their private life is none of my concern or business. I reiterate that point. Her private life is none of my business or concern. When our district makes policy for our elementary-age children based on the recommendation of self-professed radicals with no medical training, that is where two twenty and Lurie's loses my trust. SB eight one eight news is very encouraging. Let's continue in the right direction and protect our children's innocence.
Thank you. Are you Jennifer?
Jennifer, yes. Uh, my name is Jennifer Parisi. My husband and I moved into Barrington in nineteen eighty-five. We specifically chose Barrington for the highly-rated school district. We were well aware of the reputation of Barrington schools. We have a very large family here. Many relatives have attended Barrington schools from K through high school, including our own. We had four children and they all went K through twelve in the Barrington schools. We now have three grandchildren in the system and we expect that they will receive the same education. The education should include reading, writing, math, history, science, geog- geography. At the appropriate age, health education may address changes that happen to their bodies and various types of reproduction, including humans. That should be discussed in biology. My eleven-year-old grandchild will begin middle school this fall. To my understanding, he will be able to log onto his iPad and read the book Gender Queer. This iPad book may be written in a thoughtful manner that explains what it's like to realize that you are different, but it includes X-rated pornographic, pornography imagery that no minor should be exposed to. Most adults would prefer not to see it either. Having respect for others could be taught to eleven-year-olds without the sexual aspect. Respecting every person should be the lesson. Treat everyone fairly and equally. Children should learn that, but eleven-year-old children should not be learning about alternative sexual lifestyles. To be clear, whatever two consenting adults do in the privacy of their own home is their business and none of my concern, but educating minor childrens about such topics is unacceptable, unacceptable to me and most of the parents here tonight. It is a responsibility and duty of parents to determine the appropriate age for their own children to be exposed to mature topics. It is not in the purview of the school district nor the state of Illinois. Fifth-grade students have been moved to coed classes that include visuals of male erections. There are pictures in books on the recommended reading list for sixth graders and depict oral sex. You must be eighteen-year-old to purchase a Playboy, but my eleven-year-old grandchild can pull up an iPad and see two males having sex.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Brian Priggy and then Jane Papa Demetriou.
Brian Priggy have three kids, two in the district. In the state of Illinois, a twelve-year-old can seek treatment for a sexually transmitted disease, seek outpatient mental health services, receive birth control, seek treatment for drug and alcohol abuse, or the effects of a family member's drug and alcohol abuse, all without parental consent and in many of these without parental notification. While the conversation in our district currently revolves around Gender Queer and SB eight eighteen, we aren't debating a single book or a single piece of legislation tonight. In fact, we're debating whether our students ought to be educated about the choices that they're already legally allowed to make. Further, we're debating whether all students should be educated or only the cisgender, heterosexual ones. Of course, the arguments vary from objection to objection. In the case of Gender Queer, the content argument boils down to a discussion of genitals between two individuals assigned female at birth, one that would be chalked up to locker room talk if they were assigned male at birth, and a depiction that is no more pornographic than a demonstration of a condom on a banana. In the case of both Gender Queer and SB eight eighteen, the argument nets out to parental choice. SB eight eighteen very clearly states that parents may opt their children out of the curriculum without repercussion. The email that the district sent, which contained indirect reference to Gender Queer, contained a content warning and was sent to parents. Parents that can choose whether they convey that particular title to their students. In our library, we have a wide variety of viewpoints, religions, and political stances. In our curriculum, no one is objecting to instruction on reproduction. Why is it that the only topics that come up are those that exclude our LGBTQ plus students? Let's ensure that all our students feel seen and have education available that meets their individual needs and the needs of our evolving society. We don't teach Palm Pilots and AOL keywords in technology anymore. Why are we resisting the modernization of our health curriculum too?
Thank you, Brian. After, after Jane is Susan Mc Gill. We're trying to hear Jane. We're trying to hear Jane. We're trying to hear Jane. Thank you, Jane.
My name is Jane Papa Demetriou. My name is Jane Papa Demetriou. I'm a parent of two former Barrington two twenty students. Um, I also work in the district and I thought now would be a good time to, uh, come to the meeting because I did approach this eleven, ten years ago, eleven years ago. Um, I want to kind of include a little portion of this book of why, um, I'm here and it says masturbation. I'm good at it. I'm ambidextrous. If there were a present masturbation league, I'd get drafted for number one and make millions of dollars. I'm going to talk about it because everyone does it and everyone likes it. And if God didn't want us to masturbate, he wouldn't have given us thumbs. So, I thank God for my thumbs. If this paragraph made you feel uncomfortable or not appropriate to read out loud in front of all you, why would you approve to put this in the hands of our children? I was very proud of my daughter. She was a freshman, uh, not raised, um, to, you know, be familiar with all this stuff quite yet because she was not emotionally ready. And she stood up and the only one in the whole class and said, "I am not reading this." And the teacher goes, "Oh, just give it time." And she says, "No, I'm not giving it time." Since when is it necessary to include this type of reading material for classroom reading assignments? As a parent of past students, this book was brought to the attention to the principal of the high school, uh, which he was too busy, and a few members of the board swept under the rug. They tried to convince me that this was normal and it was the whole book that should be critiqued and not just portions and the lesson this book had to offer was amazing. Really? We need pornography to get a point across? Well, this has no place in our school curriculum, particularly without the parents aware and should be decided upon by each individual family, household, rather than the school deciding for us of what is appropriate for our children. Please focus on teaching about reading, writing, and arithmetic and leave the proposed radical sex ed up to the parents. Why does the school need to discuss hormone blockers, different ways to have sex, et cetera? Parents know what is best for their child, child and children and when. Stay in your lane, please. I really appreciate, um, all of what the teachers are, are doing for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Mc Gill and then Sarah Effrakano.
Hi there. I'm Susan Mc Gill. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of Barrington and, um, I've been a taxpayer all that time with no children in the park, in the school district. I wanted to applaud the board for trying to find a balance. And I came to the meeting tonight because I learned through the Democrat Precinct One here in Barrington, we spread the information about the chaos that was being created by some parents who feel strongly and rightly about part of the school process. My view is that this is a public school. I went to a Catholic school when I, in the nineteen fifties and sixties and it's a perfect place. We didn't discuss sex. We had pure or impure thoughts. I mean, it's like, it wasn't until I was in my thirties that I had some of the understanding that children have now. So, and that wasn't helpful to me. That was not helpful to me. So, the thing is that this is a public school system. You folks have done a very good job. I have supported you. I, I live next to Grove School. The construction is wonderful. Um, the carnival was not wonderful. Um, and so, the thing is that be brave, be courageous, don't cave into one side or the other. Both are right. Both are right. And I am proudly wearing the Gay Straight Alliance shirt from Barrington High School because one of my neighbors was attacked by one of her school colleagues. And so I wanted to support what this young woman was trying to do. So we need both sides of the equation, and we need some balance, less extremism. And, you know, I did actually read the book Queer Gender Queer. And at my age, it's not offensive to me. I suppose that for a child, it would be difficult.
Thank you, Susan. Sarah, and then...
There's Catholic schools and there's homeschools.
After Sarah is Brooke Heffernan.
Hello, and thank you all for your time. I'm here, and I honestly hesitated quite a bit about...
Please state your name.
Oh, sorry, my name is Sarah Efroncanno. I'm a resident in the district. I have two kids that attend Huff. I hesitated about speaking up tonight. And I, too, like many parents, have grappled with the decision about when to provide content to my children and when that would be age-appropriate. And at the end of the day, I felt like I needed to come here because I want to ensure that, much like the previous speaker that I'm providing, what I think is a balanced view from some parents that I don't think are fairly represented in this conversation. I, too, want to make sure that my children have access to content that is age-appropriate. But at the same time, I do think that it's imperative that as we look at the titles that are being put up for debate and recommended for consideration, that we are careful about designations of these titles and the information in them being designated as obscene or pornographic. Like others on the board, I am an attorney, and I, too, understand that it is imperative that definitions matter. And we pay close attention to how we are defining these and how the impacts may resonate with respect to designating certain material as pornographic. Many of these books have been praised as resources for those who identify as non-binary or asexual and those who know someone who identifies as such. I think that we should be cautious to put labels on these books without a complete discussion of the material and avoid misinformation and mischaracterization about the content in the books. I do believe also that we should be careful about filtering books that examine race and LGBTQ identities and whether or not that's the message we want to send to our community. Choosing to censor books from our high school sends a message that we don't value our own students' maturity and ability to make their decisions about the content they consume. I do believe that in high school, students are able to decide when they want to review and take into consideration that type of content.
Thank you. Brooke, and then, I can't read his name. I'm going to just say the first initials, D., Heffernan. Okay, Nelda, you're up.
No, thank you. Hello. My name is Nelda Munoz, and I have a fourth grader and a sixth grader. We moved to Barrington 11 years ago specifically for our children. The emphasis back then was on making our children intelligent, and there was strong competition for academic success. The education system I relocated here for exists no more. Now Barrington's priority is to indoctrinate our children instead of higher learning. Sex ed used to be about reproductive organs, and the birds and the bees were left up to the parents. We, I, decide when kids are ready, not you. Not you. Okay? What's, uh, now, you issue them porn, and you decide what's right or wrong, what sexual positions are okay, and even instructions in real-action pictures and explicit wording. Here is a book I just found the other day on my 12-year-old school property iPad called Fighting Words. I hope you're listening. This is from the book. Clifton put his hand on my leg, on the inside of my thigh, grabbed the bear skin beneath the bottom of my pajama shorts. "Don't," I yanked myself sideways. He laughed, put one thick hand around my neck, grabbed the elastic band of my pajamas, short with the other, stuck his hands down the back of the shorts, inside my underwear. I screamed, not that anyone was going to hear me. "Hold still," he said. I tried to get away. He took hold of the waistband of my shorts and pulled them down.
Thank you, Nelda.
My underwear, too. 12-year-old book about child molestation? How dare you?
Thank you, Nelda.
There is a quality.
Next up is Bina.
Thank you, yes.
Next up is Bina Kamath Ray, and then Paul Rednicki.
Good evening. My name is Bina Kamath Ray, and I am a pediatrician. I'm also the mother of three children in the district.
Can you please pause? I can't, I can't hear you. Everyone, please be quiet.
My name is Bina Kamath Ray. I'm a pediatrician and a mother of three children in the district, Countryside Foundations, North Barrington, and Rose. As a pediatrician, I'm an advocate for the optimal physical, mental, and social health and well-being for all infants, children, adolescents, and young adults. I'm also the mother of a son with developmental delay and intellectual disability. It is disappointing to hear that our district has decided to opt out of Senate Bill 818, but I hope there will be consideration for the important points of the bill that should be applicable to our children's education. The law establishes 15 requirements for course materials for comprehensive personal health education classes. Each requirement is aimed at promoting a complete, evidence-based, age, developmentally, and culturally appropriate education that is inclusive of all students. For a district that boasts about seeing the students, please note the following. Individuals with disabilities are seven times more likely to be a victim of sexual assault, and this hits close to home for our family. The law requires their inclusion in the education. The law also requires that we be sensitive to student circumstances, including if they are pregnant or parenting or living with STDs. Course material may not reflect or promote bias against any person on the basis of race, ethnicity, language, cultural background, citizenship, religion, HIV status, family structure, disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, or sexual behavior. The law requires education on consent, self-advocacy, developing healthy relationships, and how to seek confidential help when needed. It also requires that content be medically accurate, unbiased, and consistent with ethical medicine and public health. There has been a lot of talk in these meetings about parental choice and parental rights, and I choose for my kids to have access to an inclusive and evidence-based education. Thanks.
After Paul is Laura Davis.
Good evening. My name's Paul Rednicki. I have two kids in the district. I watched the last couple of board meetings worth of public comment over the last week or so, and had a couple of thoughts I wanted to share with the board. First off, libraries should contain a wide range of ideas, and the Barrington High School library seems to do that. I, to those who are objecting to what they, you know, to some of the content they deem objectionable for board members and community members alike, I was rather disturbed when I heard the suggestions that we need to have some sort of a grading system or a rating system for books. I know of no other library that has those. To Dr. Hunt's point, it's going to be very, very difficult to operationalize that. Let's keep a couple of things in mind. The presence of a book on the library shelf does not make it part of the curriculum. It makes it an option for a student. Discuss these topics in your, with your, in your family's morals and values with your kids, and trust them to make good choices. And this is maybe more absent the Gender Queer or the Law &amp; Boy. I'm not sure about those books. I have not read them. I haven't looked at the whole text. But thinking about any other books that might be construed as objectionable, even just in words and not in graphics. You know, the only way to combat a bad idea or a book is with a good book or another idea. So, you know, challenge people to be parents. Read one with your kids. Engage with them on an intellectual level. Explain to them why you think that's not, you know, a viewpoint or something that sits in your family values. If these are parent choices and parents have, you know, parental rights to these things, then engage with your kids. Know what they're reading. Ask them what they checked out at the library. In today's modern world, kids have unfettered access to more information than ever before. They have access to many sources of information in its many forms on their iPad, cell phones, computer, or someone else's device. The curated materials of a school library may be one of the best places for a kid to explore.
Thank you, Paul. Laura Davis, and then Barbara Petun.
Hi, I'm Laura Davis, and I have a son who went through District 220. But first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you. You guys are suffering the stresses in all the community, and it's a tough job, and I really appreciate your efforts. But I would like to thank you, speak first in support of the American Library Association, the American Association of Illinois School Library Educators, and the group of highly educated school librarians who make decisions regarding books and book lists to engage every student in the community. This is important for inclusion. Dedicated information specialists are our librarians. We review hundreds of books and make decisions on books that build empathy, resilience, and broaden awareness of people, places, and things. I don't want any books banned from the library. I look through my Home Banned Books book to see other books that have been banned in years past. So, On the Origin of Species, banned for religious grounds. All Quiet on the Western Front, banned for political reasons. Catch 22 for social reasons, and Candide for sexual reasons. I trust our education specialists. If some parents choose not to read a book on a list that's sent out, that's your choice. But I want the books to be, I don't want limited choices for my grandchildren. But thank you very much, and thanks for all your work.
Is there a Barbara? Last name begins with a P? Difficult to read here. I guess not. Rob Delac? Katie Baldassano?
Good evening. I didn't know I was going to speak tonight.
Could you please state your name for us?
My name is Robert Delac. I live in the district. And I just want to thank you for your time and share with you my thoughts as I collected them tonight. And I'm one of the last people, so thank you for paying attention. I appreciate that. The ideology of transgender is wrong, and I don't believe in it. There is, it's analogous to a person who's anorexic, who looks in the mirror and says, "Oh, my God, I'm so fat." Just like somebody looks in a mirror and says, "I'm a male," when you're actually a female or vice versa. There's a book called Johnny the Walrus. It's written by Matt Walsh. And he says, he talks about Johnny, who has an imagination, a really big imagination, and that he's a walrus. And everybody tells him, and he thinks he's a walrus. And so then, his mom starts to wonder if he's really a walrus. So she takes him to a doctor, and the doctor says, "Yep, he's a walrus." You can feed him worms, take him to the zoo. And sure enough, you know, Johnny didn't like eating worms. He didn't like really being in the zoo. And then, his mom kind of came to her senses and thought, "You know what? I better get back to what Johnny really is. He's a boy with an imagination." So, that's really all I wanted to say, and thank you very much.
Katie, and then after Katie is Rachel Turk.
Hi there. I'm Katie Baldassano. I'm the mom of three kids, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and one in the Huff attendance boundary. I'm sitting here thinking about the strategic planning process because I came to the two-day thing that we did and then the coffees. And I just keep thinking about those themes that kept coming up about transparency and partnership. And I just think that for so many of the families in this community, that is really what they're longing for. They're longing for that transparency, to know what's happening in their schools and know that it is an environment that they can trust. We want to feel like we can trust the schools, trust our teachers. And I just really, I know it's been a tough couple of years with COVID and all that, and just encourage you to keep thinking about different actions and different steps and how they build a sense of unity and trust in the community. I just also wanted to just add, you know, thinking about this petition that this over 1,200, 1,300 people signed, that just to really reiterate that it has nothing to do with sexual preference. It has nothing to do with representation. It's really about trusting our schools to curate a safe and age-appropriate library. And that petition is calling on the school to do just that. There's no desire to regulate other kids' book choices. That is not a piece of it. It's about the pornographic material. And I'll end with a quote from Thomas Sowell, who I've quoted before because he's a brilliant man, and he believes so much in the power of education. And he writes, "The most basic question is not what is best, but who shall decide what is best." And for the 12, over 1,200 signers of this petition, they want to decide as parents for their young 11-year-olds who open that iPad. They want to decide what is best for them. So just really asking you just to kind of remember that that is where the majority of parents are coming from.
Thank you, Katie. I'm going to ask Barbara again. No, no Barbara? Rachel Turk? I apologize. Apologize, I can't.
My name is Barbara Peterson. I have two of the sweetest, most lovely grandchildren in the school district.
I can't hear him.
Okay. My name is Barbara Peterson. I have two of the sweetest, most lovely little granddaughters that are in the school district. I care, I'm here, I don't have anything prepared. I don't have an agenda prepared. But I'm here as a grandparent who has seen what has happened in our school system with what's been happening throughout this country. And I have to say that when I grew up, I grew up in a neighborhood. We had families. I was in a school that had good moral values. I went to Catholic school. And I feel like I got a good education as well as a good upbringing. And I think we've gone away from that in our schools, and it's sad to me. I am sick to my stomach when I hear about these books, which I would never read. I don't know why it's not very black and white to all of you that are on the board as to this pornography that is in the schools and that it is not, I'm surprised it's not been immediately removed while it's being under review, that it should be put away so you can have the time. That I understand your need, both legally and otherwise, to review this. But I am appalled that it's still on shelves in the schools. I have seen my little grandchildren that now have had, one of them has had the sex education class that I did not, was able to see, but was given to her. And I think it changes them a little bit personally. I've said, "If you ever want to talk to Grandma about anything, you can." And I know that she's a little bit more withdrawn and shy. And I think that a lot of age-inappropriate material has been given to these sweet, innocent children who just want to be kids. They, from the beginning, my little grandkids, I was so proud of them. It didn't matter, you know, all they want is a friend. They don't care about color, about anything else, disabilities, anything. They just want to be kids. Why can we not let them be that? Why are we doing this to our children and our grandchildren? This makes me sick to my stomach. And I promised my daughter I would not come up here. I was just going to stand appropriately in the back. But I do feel from my heart I have to say something.
Thank you. Okay, Rachel Turk? And then after Rachel is Robert Wynden. The floor is with Rachel. We need to be able to hear Rachel.
Hi, my name is Rachel Turk, and I have two BHS graduates and an incoming freshman. Since 1973, the Supreme Court has used the Miller Test as a standard to define obscene materials. The Miller Test has three parts, one of which is, quote, "Whether the work, taken as a whole, lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value," end quote. lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value," end quote. I took the time to read Gender Queer for myself. By the way, it is clearly marked for ages 18 and up and a 10th grade level, so no one is recommending it for younger ages. If someone asked me to sum up this one word, sum up this book in one word, I would not say porn, I would say struggle. For the many people here who haven't read the book, this graphic novel is a memoir of a non-binary person as she, she goes by she in her youth, struggles to fit in all through her childhood, puberty, and adulthood. She repeatedly struggles with her own body, her feelings, and trying to connect with others beyond friendships. She says it's like her gender is broken and her sexuality is broken. Ninety percent of the book is her internal dialogue with this struggle. Out of the entire comic, I would say about six panels are very graphic and taken out of context, and taken out of context that are very shocking. However, I think these images were included in the book to show her very real reluctance to touch her own or someone else's genitals or have anyone else touch her. She is out of graduate school before she even kisses anyone. This is not porn. The gentleman before asked how this one explicit flame could possibly be acceptable and how showing two dudes. If you had read the book, you would know there was actually two women, and the woman with the strapping was trying something in the hopes that she might help her connect with someone intimately without touching. People show this frame for shock value, but they don't show her face in the frame. It is distressed. She asks the other person to stop, so they stop. And in the next frame, they are lying side by side in bed, not touching. Can anyone here recall ever seeing a porn film that goes like that? Well, they don't go like that. It's all about the happy ending. It's the words, "This work is a whole." Soon after that, the relationship ends and she starts to wonder if she ever has sex again. It's not porn. This has serious literary merit. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Again, Rachel was interrupted, so I let her finish for a few seconds. Robert Wyden.
You didn't turn the microphone off, though, did you? Everybody else on the other side, you did, ma'am, except hers, huh? Your old turn microphones off. Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did. Oh, that's all. I see.
First of all, thank you all for your patience this evening. Another long evening here. And it's wonderful to see so many parents out for things they are passionate about. I think one thing is clear, I think nobody is disagreeing, is that nobody wants pornography in the school library. Nobody wants age-inappropriate texts to be taught to the kids. But the question is, who decides what that is? And I'm glad to hear the board is going to revisit, visit the policies. This is something that should be revisited from time to time. But I implore you guys to be careful. This is an incredibly slippery slope. If we say one thing is inappropriate and then the next thing is inappropriate, I've already heard in the past couple of weeks conversations of different books that people don't want in the school library that I have read and that are incredibly important books that my children have read coming through this school system because they don't think they're age-appropriate. As somebody who has spent a large part of my career prosecuting and working with child sex offenses and victims of these horrific offenses, I will tell you guys that there are incredibly important material that children have to read that is not comfortable. Not necessarily these books, but there are things that are important. And so it is very difficult to handle that slippery slope when we come to flat-out removing things from our library and removing the access for people to see that. So, I ask you guys to consider that very carefully as we move forward. And thank you guys for your time.
Have I missed anyone? Two more entries I would like to add to the list and I'll ask you to put them in the record for us. The board has received a letter from Gabrielle Doyle, the advocacy campaign manager from the Trevor Project.
From where?
From the Trevor Project. I believe everybody got a copy of that. Just in case, can you make sure that everybody gets a copy of that, Janine? And then we also have received a letter from, and both these were submitted with the support of community members, a letter from Meg McElroy, the senior program director of the American Civil Liberties Union of Illinois. So we'll enter those into the public comment record as well. Janine's going to make sure that we get them.
Good.
Okay. So, Board, we have, one more thing. Just to thank you all for your public comment. This is a reminder, the public comment is not a conversation and it does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. Dr. Hunt, I heard a couple of things that maybe we should follow up on. The ability to, assuming the booking question has been gender queer for most people's discussion, there's been a couple of comments that the middle schoolers can see that when they sign on. If you could clarify that for us?
Yeah, I would ask those people that were able to do that, if you were, to please email your name to us so we can go through. That is, that is not, from a technology standpoint, something that they should have the ability to do. So I would just want to research that.
And can you, and can you please remind us where that book gender?
We can hear you all the way back there. What's the number of copies?
If anyone, there's a few people that commented that their middle schooler was able to see the book Gender Queer. If you could please email Dr. Hunt. That is not something that's supposed to be possible, is what Dr. Hunt mentioned.
So in other words, if you can access a different building's library, we would like to know that because that should not be the case. We heard a couple of public comments that that was the case, so we'd like to follow up on that.
And then just for clarification, a few things were said about the book Gender Queer. Can you remind us where that book is available and if it's part of the curriculum one more time?
It's not part of the curriculum. It's available at the high school. There are, I don't remember the number of copies, five or six copies and one electronic copy currently.
Okay. But didn't you say that all the copies have been removed while you guys are doing the review?
I believe they're all checked out by those doing the review.
Do the teachers know this? Because the email came from a teacher about gender queer. It was not a link on the.
I would assume that the online version is always available.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, Board, we have just had a few minutes to listen to the public comment. Do we want to take a quick bio break for five minutes?
Yeah, I'm in different.
When the email comes from a teacher?
That sounds like a good idea. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Involve the community on that board. That's sweet. Put us on the board, too.
I'd smile at my question.
Yes.
But I guess. Occasionally, I made the point that I didn't realize.
I don't know. I think so, got it.
All right, Steve. We're going to get back to it. Everyone, we're getting back to it. The next item on our agenda is our informational reports. There are several this week. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the informational reports that we received? Okay. Then, next up is our board committee reports. I know Finance met today. Do you guys have anything to report, or do you need some time to digest and read it back to us?
I am ready to go.
Speak loudly, loudly.
Finance met today, and it was only a few things, but important things. We discussed two new public acts that affect school finance and operations. One allows school districts earning an ISBE designation or recognition or review to recapture the difference between the maximum permitted levy and the actual levy amount in subsequent years without losing the levy authority in perpetuity. Two other portions of that legislation address the annual disclosure of a school district's cash reserve balance as part of the budget and levy adoption process and extend the sunset of certain inter-fund transfers. The other act brings Illinois in line with virtually all other states in the country in providing flexibility to use a variety of criteria in awarding national school lunch program food service bids. In other words, we don't have to go with the lowest bid. We can put in factors like quality and taste, which is awesome. So, we also talked about the 2023 draft budget. We reviewed it in the committee. It's in a little bit of a new format. It is one section of a much larger document, but includes all of the same financial information as in previous years. The budget is consistent with the board guidelines and assumptions based on the committee, the whole meeting that we had had earlier in the year. The draft budget is balanced and reflective of a surplus currently at 1.8 million, but because it is a draft, things keep changing. You know, this is the way this budget is. It keeps changing. When it comes in, spending goes out, stone companies go on strike, things happen, but we are very hopeful. The other big information in there was that the ESAR funding account is for $3.3 million for next year for the draft budget, so that's good. We'll still have ESAR funds, and it will be coming to the board at our next meeting in August. So if you want to take a preview of it, you can look at the Finance meeting documents.
Dave, will there still be ESAR funds in '23, '24, or are we done after '22, '23?
We anticipate, having spent the bulk of the ESAR funds, it may be all of the ESAR funds, if there does, if there is any surplus that's remaining some of any available funds, we would have the opportunity to spend those depending on which batch of ESAR funding it is. But we preferentially spent the early awarded items first to give us more flexibility on the tail end, but we're not anticipating that that would be any material amount if there's any left whatsoever in the following year.
I think we all have to be aware about, you know, that there will be some personnel issues that we're going to have to deal with a year from now and kind of kick it down the road. And I'm glad we have the support this year, but we just have to be careful. We don't want to get too dependent on that because we're not going to have it in the future.
That's correct. And we have, I think, as the board knows, we've identified those ESAR-funded positions very specifically so that, that we're aware which ones, those our staff that are filling those positions are aware which of those are ESAR-funded so that we're, they don't just turn into additional staff in perpetuity, that, you know, we're very careful about those.
As I recall, the posts were even written that way, that this is a one- or two-year present.
That's correct. Yep.
Well, and just to remind you, some of the extra positions were so that we could have more spacing in classrooms and have smaller class sizes, so that's not an issue this coming up season.
No, it's more social emotional this coming year.
That's correct.
And then, just one other thing, I just wanted to state again, Leah, what you were mentioning about the bids. We don't have to take the lowest, but we have to take the lowest qualified bid, as you were mentioning, but I just want to make sure it's clear that we can't just pick and choose, it has to be the lowest qualified bid for whatever restrictions that we've provided.
We, for food service, we now have some flexibility to use other criteria so that you can actually develop a weighted system. Cost still is absolutely an important factor in assessing the best bid that is available. But now, as Leah said, we can include things like quality and taste in evaluating the bids that are out there.
Any other board committee reports?
You know, if you don't mind, Leah, I'm going to piggyback on what you said. I think a few key things that I jotted down that I thought were really valuable and I think the rest of the board should be aware of as well, is that in building this budget, as Leah mentioned, there was a surplus of around $1,008, and, but in no small part is this not due, or is this due to the team making sure that we are controlling our expenses. For example, the combination of purchased services and supplies, the team made sure that we budgeted a 0% growth, which I think is huge. There are FT reductions in here in alignment with ensuring that we're staffing to our needs, and that's also factored in. And then, you know, what's not being taken into account is, you know, the ability to offset increases that we're seeing, the gasoline prices that we talked about, paper bid that we mentioned last week, or last meeting. So, a lot of good work went into this, and, you know, another note that I think is important for the rest of the board to know, too, is that with, in doing so, we're going to be able to meet Dr. Vine's recommendation and have, and land right around a 32.5% fund balance at the end of this year, provided that we meet our budget. And so, I just wanted to give kudos to you, to Sarah, to the team for doing this and pushing our stakeholders to meet this budget and to kind of, again, come back to the surplus that we had hoped for. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other updates? Let's move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on what's presented there? I'll read through everything that's on there before we take our vote. Okay. On our consent agenda this evening, our minutes from June 21st, both closed and open. Several finance reports. We have gifts, grants, and donations, so thank you, Marshall Clery, if you're still here, for your donation of books. June reports for exception bills, NSLP exception bills, activity accounts for BHS and K-8, wage and payroll report, treasurers report, revenues and expenditures, and for July, the bill list. We have a revised personnel report, and we have the parking lot agreement with Salem United Church, Salem United Methodist Church, if I as I recall, where it's the same amount as in years past.
And that's to provide parking.
Provide parking for the Huff Street, Huff Street School staff is what we use that for. And then, there's also a list of authorized depositories. All right, are we ready for a roll call? All right.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, and we've got several action items. We have second reading of board policy, and my recollection is we didn't ask for any follow-up on any of these policies. Do I want to, does anybody want to move that we approve them all as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Let me read through which policies these are. We discussed them at the last board meeting. They are Policy 2230, Public Participation at School Board Meetings and Petitions to the Board, Policy 580, Court Duty, Policy 6290, Homework, Policy 715, Student and Family Privacy Rights, Policy 7285, Food Allergy Management Program. Okay, roll call.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Okay, next action item is to approve the job reclassification recommendation that was presented. We have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
You want to give us a quick summary of it?
Yeah, so annually, per the BSEO negotiated agreement, the job reclassification committee meets and looks at positions in terms of how they fit, how they've involved in terms of workload and responsibilities each year, and then sometimes recommendations are made for reclassification. Tonight, we are recommending two positions be reclassified. That's the lead athletic trainer and computer services assistant.
Any questions about the memo that was presented? I mean, approving the recommendations, we're approving the changes to those staff as well.
Correct.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Angela Wilcox, yes. Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up is we have a motion to approve moving the October 4th meeting to October 3rd.
So moved.
Second. I'm sorry, I missed the second. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's pretty straightforward. We would be moving it from a Tuesday night to a Monday night to avoid some religious holidays. We surveyed the board, the board, we have the same number of people available at either meeting. Okay, let's go ahead and, roll call, please.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next up is a consideration to approve the resolution authorizing the sale by sealed bid of real property located at 310 East James Street in Barrington.
So moved. Second.
So, Dr. Vine, jump in if you need to on this. I believe this is the third time this board will have gone through this process to put James Street up for public auction. We're asking you to approve this resolution to set kind of the bid price, and Dr. Vine can then go forward with the process of advertising the auction with a bid opening, I believe set sometime September 6th.
Or 6th.
Yeah. And obviously, for a conforming qualifying bid, that would lead to a purchase of the property. Anything else to add to that?
Okay. Roll call, please.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, let's get into our discussion item on human growth and development.
Thank you. I'm going to invite Dr. Byrne, Dr. Gill forward to talk the board through our presentation this evening.
Have you been here the whole meeting? You've been here before.
She's hiding in the back. Hiding, but it's in the back.
Welcome.
I'll give it one more second before I look at Dr. Fuller.
Is it showing on your screen or what's it?
Yeah, it looks like this.
The expert's coming.
Over it? Oh.
Put on south.
There we go.
That's good, it's going.
There we go, thank you.
Magic.
Crazy.
Almost.
I love that.
All right, so thank you for having us here tonight. So tonight, we're going to be providing a brief update, and Dr. Hunt already talked a little bit about it, but as, as it relates to Illinois Senate Bill 818, or the Keeping Students Safe and Healthy Act, we're going to provide some background and historical context as it relates to the 5th grade Human Growth and Development Unit, which is part of our science and health curriculum, and then current practice. So, as it relates to Illinois Senate Bill 818, as previously mentioned by Dr. Hunt, this was a law that was passed in August of 2021, and districts were just recently notified on June 24th that the National Sex Ed Standards were approved by ISBE, and now a next step is that individual school districts have the option as to whether or not to provide sexual health education instruction, and then districts that do choose to provide instruction may choose and adapt the standards based on the needs of the district. So it's not the expectation that any district adopt the standards in full. There are 76 pages of national standards. We would by no means be obligated to teach all of them. We're expected to write a curriculum that's aligned to state and/or national standards, if so, approved. Additional guidance is expected from Illinois, the Illinois State Board of Education, no later than August 1st of this year, and then finally, the Policy Committee will be discussing and determining whether or not to adopt the policy related to the National Sex Ed Standards and Senate Bill 818, and as Dr. Hunt mentioned at the beginning, it is our recommendation administratively and as a teaching and learning team that we do not adopt this policy, and we will talk a little bit about why on later slides. So, before I hand it off to Dr. Gill, we're going to shift into talking about our 5th grade Human Growth and Development Unit, but I do want to point out, and it's important to do so, that Senate Bill 818 and 5th grade Human Growth and Development are two separate topics. And so, for background and historical context, this unit has been taught for over 25 years in 5th grade in Barrington, and likely, if you went to a public school, you also experienced a unit similar to this when you were in 5th grade or somewhere about that. And according to Illinois School Code, you have from kindergarten through 6th grade to teach this unit, but we've always found it most appropriate because of the standards and performance descriptors that it's most appropriate at 5th grade. As stated before, this is a mandated unit of study set forth by the Illinois School Code under the area of health, physical education, and safety. So I'll reiterate that this is not sex education, this is health, physical education, and safety, and this unit is aligned to the Illinois Health Learning Standards as well as the performance descriptors that go along with those. And then lastly, and then I'll hand it off to Dr. Gill, we did review this instructional unit and the Illinois unit, or mandated unit of study in both 2013 as well as 2017, following our curriculum review and development process within science and health curriculum reviews, and there has been no change in materials since 2017.
Okay, so this unit is taught within our science classes. In 5th grade, we really focus on systems and energy, so in the fall, our students investigate the micro level, looking at structures and properties of matter through investigating mixtures and solutions. In the winter, then, students explore systems at the macro level, looking at earth and space systems. And then, prior to the Human Growth and Development Unit, students learn about matter and energy in organisms and ecosystems for their life science unit. So this occurs in the spring, and they really develop an understanding of how matter and energy transfers through living systems. Students then look at how energy transfers through human body systems, the respiratory system, the muscular skeletal system, the circulatory system, and the nervous systems. They also study the importance of the systems, the parts and functions, the structures and functions of the system, how to care for the system, such as eating nutritiously, getting enough sleep, and exercising. And then finally, students learn about the impact of drugs on these systems as well. At the end of this 5th grade study in life science, the students are taught a three-day unit on human growth and development as the last human system of study. The focus is on changes in the body during puberty and how to care for yourself during puberty, such as getting enough exercise and getting enough sleep. We connect human growth and development to body systems so that students understand that puberty is a natural process and part of growth and development. So the standards for this unit, and again, these are Illinois health standards, the first one is students who meet the standard can describe factors that affect growth and development. The descriptors for the standard include defining the word puberty, identifying changes in the body associated with puberty, identifying characteristics of puberty, and the effects of these changes on physical, mental, and social development, and understanding how proper amounts of rest, work, sleep, exercise, activity, and nutrition promote physical, mental, and social well-being. The second standard that aligns to this unit says students who meet the standard can apply decision-making skills related to the promotion and protection of individual health. So we talk about how cleanliness affects personal hygiene and health, and we talk about the analysis of consequences for, for choice, health choices, such as staying up late playing video games, how does that affect your systems? The following topics are not in the school code for 5th grade, so these topics are not taught in 5th grade. Marriage, parenthood, and families, pregnancy and childbirth, sexual intercourse, gender identity, HIV/AIDS or sexually transmitted diseases, sexual intimidation or harassment. Again, those are not taught in 5th grade. So our current practice is that we have a three-day unit taught in the spring of 5th grade, connected to 5th grade focus on living systems and human body systems. The learning objectives, again, are why puberty, what puberty is and why it happens, the changes during puberty, and the male and female reproductive systems. While many of our students are starting to go through puberty around 5th grade, again, that's why we have it in 5th grade, this unit is an introduction to puberty and then prepares students for a deeper study of these topics at middle school. We teach the unit in homeroom classes because it's important for students to learn medically accurate information about all gender changes. It's also important for children to remain in a classroom with a teacher and classmates that they know and an environment that they know. This is especially important for students with special needs. It respects all genders, and it is reflective of our middle school health classes. It also avoids liability and litigation. Parents and guardians, or parents and caregivers, are provided with the entire unit prior to instruction, including all of the materials used in the unit, the learning objectives, talking points for parents to use with their children, and additional resources from the American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as a procedure for opting out of the unit. Parents can, again, opt out of the whole three-day unit or any one part of the unit as well. Typically, we have 10, about 10 students who opt out of this unit across the district that's over the last numerous years. This year, throughout the district, we had six students opt out of this unit. Future updates. So next year, we have decided to eliminate the 20-minute video. It is an older video. It was created in 2012, and we've used it for It was created in 2012, and we've used it for over six years. So, it is time that we updated this resource. We will look for different options and alternatives to use starting next year.
And that's all we have. Thank you for your time this evening. Any questions from the board?
Can you speak to specifically why the change was made during the 20-minute video and the period after not to separate boys and girls as we used to do?
Yeah. So, as Dr. Gill mentioned, the importance of having both genders have medically accurate information to understanding what happens to both bodies before, during, and after puberty. There's a lot of evidence out there from the medical field showing that to be helpful in preventing things like sexual abuse from happening. And it is also recommended from the Illinois State Board of Education that we do not specifically separate any genders for any type of instruction, let alone human growth and development. So, those are some reasons.
So, I have three kids in the district. I have a high schooler, middle schooler, and I had a fifth grader who I did pull. So, this change is very recent, and in Roslin, it just happened this year. So, and the fact is, actually, both genders were taught the same thing. They were then just given a safe space to go where they could ask specific questions about what were going to happen to their bodies biologically. Girls were allowed to go and ask about their periods. Just amongst girls, boys were given the opportunity. Actually, when I did it, when my son did it, it was after school, and you came with a guardian, and it was a completely separate presentation. So, a lot of parents at Roslin questioned it, and I actually asked a ton of other fifth-grade parents, and they told me they had, at other districts, they had no idea that this, why that, or they had, they have, fifth graders were the oldest. They had no idea that this changed. They had no idea why they were told during COVID that it changed just because of not being able to move kids without.
Changed before COVID in 2018?
Right. For schools that didn't change, because not every school changed in 2018. So, I know in what we were asked, we were, we were told that you were referencing the Illinois School Code and then a presentation through Lurie's. And we've since been given the information on who gave the presentation. Nothing against that.
Make a couple of clarification points on that. So, Josephine Kearns, who folks have talked about as the representative from Lurie Children's Hospital, she did work for that medical institution at the time. She no longer does. In her role that she did represent at Lurie Children's Hospital, she was not a gender consultant. In her role at Lurie, she is now. When you look up her resume, as I know many have, but in her role at Lurie's, she was a director of the gender program, as well as a researcher for Lurie's, and at no point was she ever a consultant for us. She provided a one-hour presentation on an institute day that was set up for, by the previous director of professional development on the topic of gender inclusivity, which was separate from the topic of human growth and development. But a topic within that presentation was about the importance of not separating genders during curriculum implementation.
Were parents ever asked if this is a change that they wanted as part of this curriculum, or this was just made on the recommendation of?
That's not information that I have in front of me at this point, but at, as Dr. Gill mentioned, families always have the option to opt out of any or all or part of the unit.
And I, actually, I don't really respect that. It really bothers me that the only option we give parents when they question something is to opt out, because that's the choice I was given.
That is true for this particular one.
For this particular. So, I, and I'm not, I'm sorry if it's coming off as if I'm attacking you. I don't mean it to be that way. I just, I feel that we talk about equity. We talk about making everyone feel comfortable. We talk about listening to everyone's experience and making everyone have their best experience in our district. And I, I, I and others question if this decision was made with that intention, because I do know every single parent, and I know a lot of parents I talked to said their child would never feel comfortable in this setting, being able to ask questions to further their understanding of these topics.
Can you speak to how children can ask questions and how our teachers handle that currently?
So, we have always had a question box, and it's an anonymous question box. Students are all given an index card. And then, at the beginning of the class period, a teacher will ask, like, what is your favorite television show? So, all the students at least have something down on their index card. And then, students can submit those cards. At the end of the class, they collect all those cards, and then, the teachers obviously review them then for the next day to answer. Some teachers have tried using a Google Form too, to be, you know, more up to date. But I haven't heard any feedback on that either.
To be clear, the students, every student turns in a card?
Yes.
And can you speak to, you know, Becky, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm going to, because you were here during the transition. What is the feedback from staff in terms of impact on students?
Right. So, and to be perfectly honest, our staff have different comfort levels with this unit even before we are teaching, you know, together and that. But the feedback from the staff has been really, they haven't said that, you know, there's been any kind of an issue or anything with this change. The principals that I've talked to have said that they haven't heard from many parents except for one or two schools. And so, again, I don't have any more information than that. I could ask parents and teachers for more information.
But this was communicated to parents. I mean, parents, when this change was made, and there was this description of the past over the, since, you said, 2018, that was included, that, by the way, now, we're doing this differently, or I just, you know.
It wasn't communicated in the letter that was sent home, but most of our schools have parent meetings prior to the unit where there, that's where it was communicated.
Why wouldn't it be in the letter, though?
Oh, that's a good question. Like, the letter has been around for a long time, too, so. Yeah, yeah. And we went through a lot of changes, too. In the spring of 2020, we didn't teach the unit because we were, that was the start of the pandemic.
Well, I mean, I would anticipate. How many schools switched over in 2018? Okay. So, it was, it's been a rolling change throughout the elementary schools. So, say, we have eight elementary schools. Maybe we had two switch in 18, two switch in 19, nothing happened in 20, two in 21, two in 22. I made that up. You know, clearly, you're not going to get any feedback as far as whether this was a positive change or a negative change, or, you know, teachers saw any sort of difference in 2021 because the kids weren't in the classroom. So, you know, the change is not really a change. In 18 and 19, you know, I would, I would think that that's, I mean, it would be interesting to have that data, how many, you know, classes did switch over, and to really survey the educators that were, you know, preparing this information and whether they saw a difference. The, you know, the other thing I'd say is, you know, I, I feel like there is a middle ground here that could be pretty easily attained, instead of just saying, you know what, if you're, if you know that your, your son is really shy, and maybe he is going to have some questions, and he doesn't necessarily want to ask the follow-up question that comes from his question that goes in the question box in front of, you know, a bunch of girls, or, you know, even his peers, or whatever, that, I would think there would be an option, instead of just saying, okay, then, you're going to sit in the library for this unit, or whatever they do. I don't know. I'm making this up again. But, you know, you're not going to participate. I would think that there would be an option to, you know, opt in to a group of, you know, peers, you know, boys, whatever, and similarly for a girl. You know, all of our kids, I mean, we have all, and all of our children have developed at completely different rates. You go through the element, or the middle school, and you see men that look like men and, and, and boys that look like boys. It's a broad spectrum. And, you know, everyone's comfort level with that is different. And, you know, I, I do think that as parents, we know our kids well. We know what is going to give them embarrassment, especially, you know, when you're still 10, 11 years old, and what would be a little bit more of a comfortable situation. So, you know, I'm wondering if, as we, you know, you're obviously reviewing the curriculum because you're pulling this video, looking at some other presentation methods or whatever. If there's an option to have, you know, how do you want your kids to be presented this information if you choose not to opt out? I know some parents will just still strictly opt out. But I would, I would think that maybe there would be, you know, some sort of middle ground. And, and I will say that, you know, I mean, my kids went through this years ago. But I, I thought it was so nice in the way that, at least at that time, the information was presented and, because we were invited as parents to come. And it was really such an interesting part as far as, you know, coming of age, you know, you know, discussing puberty, but also, you know, you've been treated like a kid. You were a little kid in elementary school, and now, you're going to be a big kid, and you're going to go into middle school. And you know what? We support each other as women. We support each other. This isn't a competition about who's going to be, and you know, does, is it, you know how middle school goes regardless. But I remember my daughter lighting up as we left, like, oh, my gosh, yeah, this is girl power. We're entering into this new phase as women, and I have these mutual friends, and they have my back. And, and, you know, similarly with the, with my sons. So, I do think that there's, you know, and I, again, am not an educator and, you know, haven't conducted these studies as far as providing information in, you know, a, you know, all-gender situation. But I do think there are times where it's okay. It's okay to, you know, commandeer your inner girl power, or whatever it is that, you know, you feel as an elementary student about to enter into a big school that you've never had to switch classes in before and never had to have eight different teachers, and never had to find your locker and all the other things. I mean, it kind of is a coming of age in more ways than just puberty. And I think that, you know, to kind of reassess if there's a way to still parse this out, you know, so that there's safe spaces, you know, for maybe the, you know, presentation of more intimate information and to give a better way to ask questions than just, you know, kind of one, it's either one size fits all or opt out.
Yeah. Those are all things that we can certainly look at, and I think a step in the right direction now is making the decision to remove the video, because from my perspective, the feedback I've received, the feedback that Dr. Gill has received, it's all been sent, as it relates to both genders being together, is that it's about the video and showing the video together. And we haven't received any other feedback, at least we haven't, from the perspective of genders being together for the other parts of the instructional unit over the course of three days that has been a concern together. So, I do feel like the removal of the video is a step in the right direction while we look at the components of the instructional unit, which, again, are guided by the mandated unit of study.
I have a question about other districts. I gotta believe this is a really hard statistic to find.
Yeah. So, we actually did reach out to surrounding districts that we do compare ourselves to, and it's split. Four, out of the eight that got back to us, four separate and four.
And they do that for the whole unit or just for a video? Or do you not know?
We didn't ask that specific question.
So, you alluded to a civil rights issue and avoids liability and litigation. So, but obviously, it is, other districts are separating boys and girls to learn about what is going to happen to their specific bodies during puberty. So, what, I mean, what litigation are we risking?
Without going into legal details, as you know, that would not be appropriate. But we did have a situation where a family, families approached the district and want, having concerns about students being misgendered and not being, not wanting to be separated for the unit. So, that, at one particular building, so that was one of the reasons to start this investigation.
Even though gender identity is specifically not taught in this unit, which we've discussed. So, I know at Roslin, we just, because this did not go over well, amongst a lot of parents, it was asked, why couldn't we show the video? We had, we had three classrooms. Why couldn't one be, if boys and girls wanted to be there together, one be girls and one be boys? And then, have a questions in that situation, and we were shot down. I, I just feel we sometime, I feel that a unilateral was decision was made without perhaps taking into account all the students and perhaps for some of the students is how the feedback I've received.
But I think what we, we've said with pulling the video out, looking at what would replace that, warrants us taking a step back and looking at how that's offered.
I agree. That would be great.
And since this was reviewed in 2013, 2017, is it up for review, just the whole unit itself in the next couple of years?
No, it starts, I want to say, 23, 24.
Oh, okay. So, another two years yet.
Official review starts with.
For all, for the whole science?
Yeah, yes.
At elementary.
But at this point in time, it's just trying to find a new fill-in for the video that's going to be removed.
And it may not necessarily be a video. Like, we'll look for that, but it may, just the modality and the type of media might be different.
So, along with the new video, are you saying you would consider re-going back to separating boys and girls for portion of the unit for questions?
I think they need to look at resources, make decisions on that, and then determine what is most appropriate.
I guess along that line, because I know at many schools, this was sponsored through the PTO as an after-school thing. Are schools still allowed to do that if they so choose?
I don't have the history completely on that. I got a little bit of it. You know, if, if outside activities don't want to use our facilities, there's, there's procedures and processes to do that. I don't want to speak for the PTO on whether they want to do that or not.
I know. I'm just, I'm not speaking, saying they do either, but it used to be run that we would bring in a speaker for girls and a speaker for boys, and it was not, it was sponsored outside of, not outside of the school, but the PTO sponsored it in our particular case. Or I think in one school, maybe the Girl Scouts did it, or whatever. Is that?
Yeah. So, as stated in the memo, this year, there was only one school in particular that chose to do that with an outside organization, and it was an event just for, for males.
I think in the past, there'd be like a mommy-daughter tea or something like that, but I know that, you know, not all kids have a mommy, you know, and so, that becomes like difficult and troubling and, you know, hits a different button of, of care that we need to be aware of. Or daddy, or, you know, yeah. And we don't want to ostracize kids.
Oh, absolutely. You should be able to come with a guardian or whoever you so choose, a trusted adult.
I want to say that I feel like you guys got this. And the thing, the only thing that I would ask for is when, when and if we make a change, that we make it clear in the memo that goes out to the parents.
Yeah, I agree.
I trust your judgment. That's what you're here for. I feel like we're way too far on the dance floor.
So, will we hear back what the, the changes in the curriculum then?
It's timeframe to look at this, the fall.
Yeah, by, yeah, within the fall, because this unit is typically taught in April. And so, in a timely manner, prior to the unit's implementation.
Let's do that work and take what we heard under consideration. We'll report back to the board. Probably in a weekly report.
That would be excellent.
Can I just, I just want to back up a little bit. You're differentiating sex ed from a family planning unit. In sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, they don't get sex ed at this point?
No. So, it's, so all of this, so remember what I said, it's Illinois Senate Bill 818 is different than the mandated units of study. So, the mandated units of study in the state of Illinois fall under the category of health, physical education, and safety. So, there's a bullet-pointed list of everything a student must experience either in grades K through six or middle school and/or high school. And so, in middle school, as you know, a student needs 18 weeks of health. In high school, a student needs 18 weeks of health, and we choose to teach that in 10th grade. So, within the units of study as set by the state board, in those bullet points, we are obligated to align ourselves to the Illinois Health Standards. So, let's say we did adopt the sex ed standards, then we would have to go back and realign our curriculum to.
our curriculum to embed some of those standards in. But if not, then the standards that we're obligated to align to are the Illinois health standards, which to my knowledge are not set for revision at any law. That could change, but it's not right now.
And then going back to 818, so we can't pick and choose if, I mean, we either have to say, yes, we're going to do this or no, we're not? Or are there important things in 818 that we might want to share with our students in District 220?
Yeah, so that's a conversation that we should have at the policy committee as to, because you do have to either adopt and say you're teaching sex ed or not teaching sex ed. But then if we decided to teach sex ed, then you could take the standards document and then choose which standards we teach within there. So let's say we felt as a district, it was only appropriate to use the 612 standards, then we would have the ability to do so. But we feel we have what we need right now within the health standards to align with the mandated units of study, if that makes sense.
That's not something you would, August 1st, it's approved and you're going to roll out this year.
Oh, no, I understand that.
We would need at least one full academic year to appropriately vet the standards.
Dr. Hunt mentioned that if the resources associated with kind of changing our curriculum to really focus on all of these aspects of sex education is taking away from the core academic values that we are promoting and teaching in our schools, which makes sense. I mean, that's, that's a job.
It was one of the concerns discussed with our team, I'm sure.
So like with the Illinois health standards, things like sexually transmitted infections are part of the health standards. So there are still some topics, but it's limited to what's set out in the health standards.
So will we, will we though look through, I guess I'm still confused. Have we got, received everything that we may choose from?
So if we don't adopt the policy, if we don't adopt the policy, then there is nothing we need to do right now as it relates to curriculum with the exception of reviewing the video or instructional materials to replace the video because we're already aligned to the mandated units of study.
Should we decide to adopt the policy, we would be able to pick and choose pieces of it. So if there's 100 things, we can pick one.
Well, I mean, there's 76 pages of standards, so not, we wouldn't necessarily teach all 76 pages, but we would align our curriculum to the standards because standards themselves, just like a textbook, is not a curriculum. There are a set of standards that help inform curricula.
But we could choose that one standard and implement it in our current curriculum as well, right?
Which one standard?
If there's 76 pages and there's one piece of it that we like.
If we don't adopt the policy, no, we're not using any of these standards.
I think.
To my understanding, ISB hasn't responded to whether the district can adopt all or nothing. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I thought it was.
That's where I'm confused.
I guess I'm just troubled that there's been no change in material since 2017, but things have changed, you know? Things are happening. And I just want to make sure that we stay on the cutting edge. That's what Barrington does with all their curriculum. So I agree, we don't want to spend more energy than we have to, but we also don't want to teach our kids something from 2013 when in 2023, that may not apply anymore.
But health, health is part of the curriculum cycle, just like every, every curriculum comes around five years, seven years? Every seven years. And 23, did I hear?
Yeah, starting in 2023 starts the process. So that first year is really that research and then the second year is the design and develop and the third year is implementation.
We will be looking at this.
We can't review all the curriculums at once. It's impossible. We need our teachers to be teaching, right?
That's why we have a cycle.
A cycle, yes.
And you can't buy the resources every year. Dr. Byne, Dr. Byne will fall over.
Standards don't change all the time. Like, since we're currently aligned to the health standards, we do have an appropriate curriculum in place. And we do believe that curriculum is fluid. And one example of a small revision is looking at something like a supplemental instructional material because that's one small piece that makes up a much broader curriculum.
We appreciate you recognizing that and trying to fix it.
And just clarify for me, so the health and PE standards that, maybe I'm using the wrong term, what did we just update? You were talking about the PE teachers and.
Oh, PE curriculum.
And that has nothing to do with the health curriculum? I mean, that's a separate.
Some of the health standards are overlapped with PE. And so, yes, they do talk about nutrition, they talk about proper exercise and the importance of exercise. So some of that is being taught in our PE classes, but not human growth and development.
There's very specific health standards by the state of Illinois.
Just want to be clear exactly what we're doing and what we need to be doing.
No, thank you for.
Well, thank you for all you do.
Taking the time to bring this forward. Okay, how about agenda items for August 16th? Let's see what we have on here. We'll have an action item to adopt the textbook instructional materials.
Just a reminder, we did that kind of at the end of the year. Those four talked about, let's do it at the front end. So if you're thinking we just did that, well, we did recently do that, but we're looking at resources and materials for the upcoming school.
So this is, so this list then is going to be posted publicly when? Or is it already out there? I didn't check, to be honest.
So if, what, prior to the launch of the new website, it was up there? I'm not sure, and Samantha, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it should be on the website and after board approval, we'll replace it with the new one.
No, no, but I'm talking about the new one.
Right after board approval, we'll put it on there.
Is it? I guess my question is, does it need to be up there prior to board approval too? I mean, because we can vote on it, but I guess, don't we want to get a sense from the parents, think of these materials as well?
We bring it to you as representatives of the community and recommend it to you to approve.
I'm just trying to think of what we looked at this year. It was hundreds of pages of books and I'm not sure how the seven of us.
Dr. Hunt said that they would highlight any changes in the curriculum and draw it to our specific attention.
Well, that's fair, but that doesn't mean that.
Then you could go to last year's list essentially.
Yeah.
This is the core, right? We approve the core curriculum.
Okay, so then, I guess, the school starts on, actually, school starts on the 17th, right? Kindergarten?
22nd or 23rd or 24th?
I'm sorry, the 18th, okay.
Steve, don't touch the ball.
Okay. I don't know, I guess I'm just, I'm concerned because I just know that, I don't know, I don't know, I don't think I have the bandwidth to go through hundreds of pages of, and I get that you're going to identify the changes, but who's to say that it's just going to be changes that need to be verified? I don't know, I'm kind of thinking out loud right now. I don't know what the rest of you guys think. I had a different understanding of how we were going to do this.
I think by law, we have to approve, we have to take this action for policy.
So what is the timeline again? What's the timeline?
The district has typically done this at the end of the school year.
Right, which, but we agree that that's not right.
The board asked that we move that up, so we are moving it up. Now, maybe this first year, it's difficult because it's a quick turnaround. And Steve, if you want to go through all of that, I would start with what we currently have out there. That's, I mean, that's, I would assume the vast majority.
There's going to be very, very minimal changes.
Yeah, so the vast majority is consistent with what you approved two months ago.
Well, to be fair though, I think, and I want to be fair to everybody, I just know when we approved it in what, June was it? Or was it the May meeting, the second May meeting?
It's April, I remember.
Was it the second, was it the second April meeting? I mean, we were four weeks away from the end of school. It had been in effect for what, seven months?
Why are we doing it in August now?
That's why we're changing the process.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is, again, my takeaway from that meeting was just, all right, well, it's already been in place, so, you know, why dissent at this point?
No, I understand. So I would, this would be my suggestion, this is what I did.
Please, please.
So, you know, if you're interested in newer materials that are being presented, then I would just look at the copyright dates of the publications. They're all listed.
Sure.
Right?
And again, we'll highlight what's changing.
Right, and the ISBN number and everything are all accessible on the report.
To your point, Steve, maybe this year is not the year to do it because we have a tight turnaround, but maybe now, and we can keep working our way up to having this be done earlier and earlier, at the beginning of the summer.
So that we can approve it and then there's some time to be careful.
As we review curriculum and resources, we can bring those changes with those approvals.
So this is a short blip because like the timeline indicated before, the presentation was given in April, but unfortunately it was for the current year. Now, in the 22, 23 school year, we'll provide another presentation in April or however the timeline is determined by the board, which will include the report for the 23, 24 school year. So you won't even have to wait until the summer.
Makes sense?
Sounds like good information.
That's awful.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the confidentially closed session minutes?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm sorry, back to agenda items. Our, I'm not, are, when did we decide to discuss how books are curated? Perhaps our definition of, which I agree, is slippery slope, which is, I feel like if we could define things for people to the best of our ability as a district, we might.
Dr. Hunt was going to get back to us.
I'd like to just have some conversation with my team and what it would take.
Side note question, did you get my yes for the minutes? Did you get my yes for the minutes?
Did I overtalk you? Sorry, Steve.
For the minutes?
Approval of the minutes?
Did you make a yes?
Yes.
Okay, good, sorry, because I don't think I spoke.
That's because I spoke, sorry.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?